Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors for our January 10, 2017 auspicious meeting. I've called the meeting to order, and can we please have the roll call, Brian?
Yes. Supervisor Foy.
I am here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Here.
And Supervisor Parks.
Here, thank you. And Supervisor Long, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we are going to have a ceremonial swearing-in of Supervisors Steve Bennett, John C. Zaragoza, and Kelly Long by presiding Judge Patricia Murphy. Thank you for being here, Judge Murphy. She's with our Superior Courts, and if you'd all like to go on down and get sworn.
That's fine. Face the judge.
Let him know.
All right, so if you would, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Of course, state your name. I do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
We do have one public comment card on this item, so I will go ahead and call John Marholyn and Erin Antria.
Mr. Powers, Chairman Parks, and Supervisors, I'm Jan Marholyn, the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club for Santa Paula, Fillmore, and Piru. I wanted to say Happy New Year. We wanted to congratulate Supervisor Long and congratulate Supervisors Zaragoza and Bennett on their campaigns, and thank all of you for your support of our local youth. You support 1,700 kids on the 126th corridor, and we thank you.
And just to echo Jan's comments, welcome aboard Supervisor Long. Congratulations Supervisor Zaragoza and Supervisor Bennett. You've all been instrumental in helping young people and teens in the Oxnard and Port Huonimi area be productive, responsible citizens. Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Oxnard and Port Huonimi, we serve over 10,000 young people a year through various programs. You've been instrumental in helping kids at our Nylund Acres Center, helping kids through our Evening Reporting Center, our workforce programs, and our Boys and Girls Clubs inside Juvenile Hall. So, thank you. We continue, look forward to our partnership and continuing the good work. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, and thank you so much for the service you provide. It really is essential. At this point, we can have some comments or go right to election of Chair and Vice Chair. What would your pleasure be? Supervisor Bennett, you have an opinion?
I was going to make nominations for Chair and Vice Chair.
Okay, then let's go to Item 5, which will be election of Chair and Vice Chair for the Board of Supervisors.
I'd like to nominate Supervisor Zaragoza as the Chair and Supervisor Foy as the Vice Chair.
And is there a second to that motion? We have a second. And with that...
There you go.
There you go.
A little rusty.
And with that, if we could all please vote. All right, well, congratulations Supervisor Zaragoza and Supervisor Foy. And with that, let's go recess. We have scheduled on here a nice reception break to congratulate our winners here, and then we'll come back for our...
I do want, if Supervisor Long and Zaragoza, if they want to say something, I think, it feels like it may be more appropriate before we take the break for...
That'd be great, because I'm prepared. I just want to thank everyone that came out today, to those who have supported me through my campaign, to my friends and especially my family for enduring a really long election. And I'm truly honored to be the Supervisor of District 3, and being elected even trusted me with a really great responsibility. And I will make sure that I can serve the interests of our district and our county. Exciting to state that, for, I pledge to ensure our county government is fiscally responsible, that we're focused on building our economy, and that we're improving our safety for all of our community. And then also, along with me, you get a wonderful staff, and I want, they're here today, and I wanted to acknowledge them as they are here. We have Paul Grossgold, who is our Chief of Staff, if you could stand. We have Martine Hernandez. Also, we have Matt Guthrie and Nancy Phillips. Please know that you can reach out to our office. We are a team, and we are looking out for the best of our constituents. We are at a 90-day focus here. If you know me, I try to take on a lot, and luckily, I have this great team to help me. And what we're doing is really making sure that we can meet with our stakeholders, with our departments, our agencies, to ensure that we are focused on the right items. So, if you need anything, come to our office. If you're thinking, oh, I'm going to hold back and wait, don't. Why? What we're doing is looking to see, as a Supervisor, how we can help you, what are the interests that you need to work on, and really just make a great Ventura County. So, I just want to thank you again for all your support. It's not me that got here, it's all of you and all of your votes, and it was wonderful to finally be here, so thank you very much.
Madam Chair, thank you. Thank you so much, and it's really an honor for me to be named Chair Number 1. And also, I just want to thank my staff, you know, that really helped me tremendously, that get re-elected again, my committee, get re-elected. I want to introduce my staff. I have Bill Gallagher, I think he's here in the corner, and also Lourdes, always on him. We've got Lourdes, and also we've got Tracy. Tracy's here with us, Tracy, and Gallagher, and then Jesse's always on. And I want to commend Supervisor Long, you know, for, did an excellent campaign, and you became the winner, and I want to congratulate you for that. And I think we're going to make a good team. You're going to now join an excellent team here. I think we have an excellent team. We've had a great team for the last eight years, and welcome. And Supervisor Bennett, you know, we've worked really hard together. He had fought a really tough campaign and won. Congratulations. And also, again, I want to share that I have my sister-in-law here, Renee, and my grandson, JJ, they're back there waving. And also my other granddaughter, Jaclyn, is here too. And my wife couldn't make it, because she's, apparently she's got a cold this morning and couldn't make it to here. I just want to share that here in the last eight years and four years, we had a good run, you know, we had, and I want to share with the boards that the board's been very supportive. We opened up a community center over in Nylund Acres with the Boys and Girls Club of the Oxnard, Port Huonimi, Erin, you know, they're helping us out. We had a lot of contributors such as the Harrisons, you know, the Toro Industries, and we had the Rotary Club of Oxnard help us out with that, with that Boys and Girls Club Center that we have over at the community center. We had a bilingual senior summit over at Oxnard College that really helped our seniors. We tried to open McGrath Park, but unfortunately, the water beat us to it, but now we're going to move McGrath Park, and I want to thank the board for helping us out at that time. We had a farmworker workshop, Supervisor Bennett and I here. We had over 300 and some people. In fact, this room was completely packed, and also out in the patio. We continue to work with the harbor, with the bisques, with the museum, the Maritime Museum, with the Harbor Promenade, with the Marine Emporium, and we're also working in the Peninsula Road Harbor, looking for a new lobster trap restaurant out there at the harbor that's hopefully going to open soon, and also a hotel. And also, we continue working on Fisherman's Wharf. I think it's extremely important that we open Fisherman's Wharf. It's been actually not looking good. So, again, and also, I want to thank our CEO, Mike. Mike Powers has done an excellent job, I think. I've worked with many city managers, with CEOs, but I think that Mike Powers and his staff are just outstanding, so I'm going to commend you for that, Mike. And at this time, I'm very, very happy then to be your Chair, and also, again, thank you all for being here, and it's a great opportunity. And at this time, we also have something for Chair. Linda Parks, Chairman Linda Parks did an excellent job. We had many, many meetings. I think she broke the record. We had a couple of meetings that were here 12 hours. But she did a really, really good job, and very patient, and also listening to all the individuals. We had at 1.100 speakers, 100-plus speakers, right, Supervisor. And in fact, it was so large that it took us a couple of days to complete that item. But at this time, I'd like to present this to Linda Parks, Chair of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors, and her gavel she's going to take with her, and I'd like to give her at this time.
Thank you, sir. Steve, you want to say something?
Yeah, thank you. Do I have the right glasses? There we go, great. Well, I would like to congratulate Supervisor Zaragoza upon her reelection and Supervisor Long. It sounded so interesting to hear the role, and it was the exact same role that we did, Supervisor Foy, Supervisor Long, but welcome aboard. It's a diverse group of people, but it's a group of people that really have been committed to good government as they see it, and we really look forward to my staff in particular being so close to your office and stuff. We look forward to working with you here, and if we can help you in any way, we certainly want to do that. I'd like to thank the citizens of District 1 for their confidence in terms of reelection. When I was elected back in 2001, I identified some things that I wanted to get done at that point in time, and we went through that list, and we are, I want to identify now for the next four years, some of the things that are going to be important to my office as we move forward. And certainly, water in Ventura County, I think, is just a huge issue. In spite of the recent rains that we have received, the drought is not over, and even if the drought is over, the drought has highlighted for us some of the vulnerabilities that we have here and the needs that we have in terms of moving forward. Foster care reform implementation, we have the daunting task of trying to end the group home system in the state of California because the state legislature has mandated that. That means we have to recruit a lot more people to become foster parents, and to do that for older children is going to be a real challenge. So, the Human Services Agency, led by Barry Zimmerman and with his able staff all the way down, they have a daunting challenge, and so, right up there with water is to get this foster care implementation done properly here, and I'd like to use this opportunity to implore all of you to help us get the word out. Everybody comes in contact from time to time with somebody who, if they're just at the right moment in their life for them to consider becoming a foster parent, and I just ask you to please keep it in mind and encourage those people to contact our staff about becoming foster parents. People need to be nudged four or five times usually before they actually get over the hurdle, and you may be that final nudge for them in terms of getting them there. The general plan update that we have, and trying to make sure that that's a great document when we're finished with that in 2020. The improving broadband infrastructure I identified some time ago, but I'm particularly interested in doing that in the Ojai Valley where they don't have great broadband connection. We want to make sure we get that done. The short-term rental issue is just going to dominate a great deal in District 1 in particular. Want to make sure we do a fine job with that. The Affordable Care Act will have some significant changes implemented, and so for us to all be on top of that and make sure that we do a great job of staying on top of that. An issue that is, I just think, a very enjoyable issue for us to work on is bicycle tourism in Ventura County is really starting to generate some real enthusiasm. Supervisor Parks has a group going down in East County. We have a relationship developed with Santa Barbara County, and you know, this coast is as fine a coast as you can get for, or fine an area as you can get for tourism. Last night, we had two bicycle riders spend the night at our house from Turkey. They're riding around the world, and this is just a classic stop, and I'd say every month, we have international tourists that use, take advantage of the warm shower setup. But Ventura County can do something that's really good for our residents and our businesses if we can encourage and grow bicycle tourism. A few final things. I'm very interested in exploring public financing of campaigns in this next four-year term, also trying to look at the 2/3 vote requirement that we have out there and getting that lowered to 55%, both for transportation taxes and open space districts. And the final thing I'd like to do is, Supervisor Foy will really appreciate it. I have a little PowerPoint I just want to put up, and it's just one slide, and I hope the staff has it. No, it's not the, not, it's not that one, it's the one on the opioid crisis, right? And, you know, I'm joking slightly here, but this is really a serious challenge that we have here in Ventura County. It's the last goal that I would identify, and hopefully, they'll be able to bring it up pretty soon here, right? And I would also, there we go. This is the headlines that was in the Los Angeles Times a month ago. Amid the opioid epidemic, drug makers get a break, and then the next slide, please. You got it there, Brian? There we go. This was the front page of the Los Angeles Times. Headquartered at Stanford, Connecticut, Purdue Pharma has reaped more than $31 billion from a painkiller, OxyContin. More than 194,000 people have died since 1999 from overdoses involving opioid painkillers. Just yesterday, on national radio, healthcare costs in the United States are climbing significantly because of the number of opioid-addicted babies that are being born, and they're very expensive out there. It is a crisis of enormous proportions, and while we are going to spend an enormous amount of energy on the issue of pot legalization and what we're going to do, I don't want us to lose sight of something that is far more dangerous for our community, and that is what's happening with this opioid epidemic. And so, my final comment here to start is, doing good government is an art, not just a science, and it requires people working well together, and so, to our fine staff, you've got great challenges, but you have great opportunities. You get to work in county government with a mission that is second to none in terms of where you could work, and I just want to challenge all of us to do that, and I feel honored, sincerely honored, to get to work with everybody from Supervisor Peter Foy on one side of the political spectrum to myself, and to work with a staff led by Mike Powers and everybody to get it done, and I'm looking forward to just having us accomplish a lot here as a team over the next four years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. And Linda, to you, and thank you for your leadership in the chair, and as Supervisor Zaragoza said, there were some really long, tough meetings that you had to really manage. You really did a good job, and I do appreciate that. We could have been here days longer without your leadership, so I do appreciate that. And congratulations to both of you on your elections, and we've come to be able to serve together, and I appreciate that, and diversity in what we're doing, but being able to get along. And Supervisor Long, that is part of this whole thing that we do. We can agree to disagree, but we don't really get disagreeable, and I appreciate that part of what we do here, because there's a lot of people out here that we serve, and they deserve to hear the differences and stuff, but not the screaming and yelling and other things that I think you hear other places that we can get along, and so I think that's true. But for you, I think you're going to enjoy this opportunity. It's very diverse, very unique, being a Supervisor. Your family's going to see some things that, all of a sudden, somebody will come up to them, and just that one thing is the most important thing in the whole world, and it's a unique, unique part of that. But you've got a great team you're working with. I mean, a lot of them are out here, your public safety leaders, your different groups and different people from all different parts of the staff, they really are good, good people, and they really care. There's almost a million people we serve here, and they believe in that. And as a leader of what we do, it's important, the policies we set and the example we set, I think, is very important, and they carry it out. They do the work, and you're going to be very proud of these people. So, I think that's important. And under the CEO leadership, Mike has done a tremendous job. I know a lot of us have had the opportunity to serve under different CEOs, and Mike is one of the best of the best, and that makes it a lot, a lot of fun. Open, honest, and I think the rest of these people will say that too. And so, that makes it good to be part of what we do. But I think a lot of us realize, and sometimes we don't, and I know I didn't realize, of the position that we hold, a very powerful position in public office. One thing I learned from people out of Washington was that a California supervisor is one of the most powerful positions in America, because, not as a commissioner or other places, but as a Supervisor. You can't have the governor of the state of California come down and tell us pretty much how to do our land use. We can do that. President of the United States can't do that. But we have a lot of power, so it means a lot, but on the other side, it has a lot of effect on a lot of people's lives, and so, we take that responsibility, I think, very seriously, and for the livelihoods and the people that get the opportunity to live in this county. So, and I said Supervisor Bennett will tell you a lot of times that we set an example to a lot of the people in California and parts of the country, and so, we have that opportunity. So, I think you're going to serve with a tremendous group of people who believe that this is a great place to live and a great place to be, and the staff we have and the leaders we have do a tremendous job. So, congratulations on your opportunity. You've picked a great staff. I mean, I got to tell you, you've got a diverse, diverse district, and you've picked a diverse group of people, which I think is really good for what you've done, so it's going to give you a good running start. So, again, congratulations. Look forward to serving with you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations Supervisor Zaragoza. Not as hard-fought a campaign as Supervisor Bennett, but congratulations to both of you.
It was tough.
Ran unopposed. And to Supervisor Long, I know you've served on the school board, you've had some opportunity to serve constituents and hear from the public. This is a larger playing field, but what's nice is it also has a greater effect, and as Peter was saying, we do have the tools to do that. We have some great staff available, and I know you're going to enjoy it, and I congratulate you, and I know your family's very proud of you, but I know you're going to have a good time, and will make a good difference. So, congratulations. So, now, at this point, shall we go to a reception break? Okay. And then when we come back, we'll have a new chair. Oh, Mr. Powers has some comments.
Uh-oh, no, no. I don't want to get...
They're both full of muffins. That's not good. I'll be very brief, I promise. Just first of all, Happy New Year to all, and congratulations to Supervisors Bennett and Zaragoza, and I really appreciate the tone that your board sets up here, because it makes a huge difference to your county staff, and we don't take it for granted, and we're very lucky. And congratulations to Supervisor Long, and welcome, and I just appreciate your boundless enthusiasm and eagerness, and you can see it in two different ways. She received two boxfuls of 25 binders in all the county departments with a great big smile and eager to dig into it, and then she spent, a couple of weeks ago, six days in a row, meetings morning, noon, and night, of varying levels of excitement, at the CSAT Conference, and with great interest and enthusiasm and curiosity, and eager to learn about county operations and to get to know her county team. So, really excited to work with and for you, and excited about 2017, and to really support your board's initiatives and safety, health, social services, and economic impact as well. So, Happy New Year, congratulations. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I... I'm sorry. Are we going to start back again at 9:15?
That sounds perfect, and you'll be Chair.
All right. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
Rate Increases for Water District Number 17. A Revised Board Letter has been submitted, and Agenda Page 8 was updated. Item 41, Public Works, Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Water Rate Restructuring and Rate Increases for Water District Number 38. A Revised Board Letter has been submitted, and Agenda Page 8 was updated to reflect the change in the Board Letter. Item 44, Public Works, Public Hearing Regarding Intent to Sell County-Owned Real Property in the City of Oxnard. A Revised Board Letter has been submitted. And finally, there's an addendum item, time certain, 10:30 a.m., Item 49. CEO's Office, Public Hearing Regarding Adoption of the 2017-2020 MOA with IUOE Local 501. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any
I just want to point out that on Item 33, we received a request from the Ohio Basin Groundwater Management Agency, one of the members of that agency, asking for us to delay the second reading of this. I've carefully considered this request, and I don't recommend that we meet that request. I'm happy to explain all that if people need that, but we, they were thoroughly notified about our first hearing of this, and the implications that they weren't notified is simply not accurate. So, anyway.
So, Mr. Clerk, Item 33, then, they asked for reconsideration, and do we have to take a vote on that?
No, I mean, I'm just recognizing that they made the request.
Okay. So we have a first and
I'll move the recommended action. Second.
Okay, so let's vote. That's approved. And our next item is a moment of inspiration. This is Renee Corrado. Renee? And Renee, let me see. I don't have the information.
I think you do.
Where is that information for Renee? I don't have your information, but you look great.[694.04][694.04](LAUGHTER). So you're going to share with us a bird biology, and let's go ahead and help us out.[705.04][705.04](LAUGHTER). This is my first assignment, see?
It was great. Good morning, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thank you very much, Board of Supervisors, and especially Linda, Supervisor Linda Park, for the invitation to be here today. Also, I don't know how this thing works.
Brian can give you.
Oh, there. I need the[731.12][731.12](LAUGHTER). So that is the Motagua River, that's the river that crossed the little village I was born in Guatemala, a little village of tortilla houses. I lived in that little paradise in 1968, to go to Guatemala City, where my parents took me there when I was eight years old with my siblings. We were seven. We were so poor that my mother had to sell tortillas, and my father only received $4 a week to pay for the seven kids that he had, and we were super poor in there. So in the morning, I had to go to school, and in the afternoon, I had to work as a shushan boy at the age of eight. I was in the streets of Guatemala, where I asked for leftover to take to my siblings, and sometimes that was not enough to take home. So I had to compete with the street dogs and the trash dumps in there to get some pieces of avocado or some pieces of papaya. Guatemala was devastated for civil war, and when I was there, I was in the middle of the civil war and completely poverty. So I decided that I didn't want my family to grow up in that civil war in there in Guatemala and that poverty. And I saw that America had the great dream, and everything can be possible in America. I decided to, came in here after trying to get a visa that I couldn't get. So I crossed the border without immigration papers, and I came to the United States with no family, with, I didn't speak the language, and only with the sixth grade of schooling. I did any kind of work, cleaning dishes, and also to work in painting, cleaning houses. And then I found a job as a gardener in the Western Foundation of Bird Biology Museum, at the Bird Museum in Camarillo. I saw the work that they were doing in there, all the biologists working conservation around the world, and I loved the work they did. And so I knew that America was the, in America, everything was possible, so I want to be a biologist. I want to be like them to work in conservation. So I decided to go to school after work and learn English. After that, I took a regular classes, and now I am a biologist, and I'm in charge of the museum, together with my friend, colleague, Dr. Linéjo, that is here supporting me. It's a great museum there in Camarillo, that you guys are invited. I will give you some brochures. So the museum sent me to Guatemala to do some conservation work. And I went back to my little village, and I went back to see my beautiful river that I left in 1968 in there. And this is what I found. The river was a trash dump. After the civil war, there were not, nothing left, no structure in there, no processing plants, no trash pickup, and so everything went to the river. So when I saw that, and Dr. Hall and myself, and I would say, we have to work for this river. And people said, you guys are crazy, or you are dreamers. And so, yes, I am a dreamer. I accomplished many of the dreams in this great country, and so I said, this can be possible, too. So we started knocking doors. The museum started helping, doing work in there, doing analysis of bird egg contents, and there also analysis of the water. And we were monitoring also all the trash. We started knocking doors for about 15 years, and nobody opened the doors. But we continued. The museum continued, the museum supported, and so I kept going. Until last year, the new government started, and I became a friend with the president, and so he said, we want to work together with this. And so we did. So the surprise was that he really did what he said he would do. And he started working in it, and he put the army to work in it. And in December, I was invited by the Minister of the Environment to be the keynote speaker in there, and to see the processing plant, they already put it in place. And so they already put in the army, this army that I was in the civil war in the '80s and '90s, now helping the people. So I was so happy that they started putting several processing plants already, and now people will benefit with all of this. But then, this country not only gave me the opportunity to accomplish many dreams as a biologist, but as a writer. I was able to write two books. The first one is in Spanish, and the second book is bilingual. It's about my life, how I became successful in America. But I decide, when I see the opportunity here in the United States, that I will start a 501-3C, a nonprofit organization. Part of the sales of my books go into that organization to help kids in Guatemala, to put them to school, to give them education, because I believe that education is the key to open the door of the dreams. And in Guatemala, what I say is, educate, that way you don't migrate. I want the kids to stay in Guatemala. I don't want the kids to migrate here, because these possibilities in there. So in December, when I went there, I went to give donations to 150 kids. These kids are still working in the trash, in the trash dump in Guatemala. The families and them are working in the trash. And so they live with whatever they can collect in the trash, and they sell it. But in December, after I give them the donation, and instead of giving, having a Christmas gift, their little houses that are made up with cardboard, because they live in cardboard houses, that was a fire. All the houses went in fire, and so they lost everything. But the lucky thing is, I already paid for the schools, so they had that, and the parents were so pleased with that, and so they, at least they can go to school. So my foundation put some boxes, some stuff, cloth, and shoes, and blankets, and all of that, and we send it to them, and so next week, they will receive at least some help with this foundation I am managing. And so I say that America is a great country. Here, anything is possible. I start from zero. It's not an excuse not to start working for your dreams. I can see that if you really want it, if you really work for them, you can accomplish many of them. And so, and I didn't come in here because I want to leave my country. No, I didn't want to leave my country. I want to stay there, but because the poverty, the civil war that I was there, made me come in here. But when I came in here, I saw the opportunities. I saw that I can work in here hard, and I can accomplish a lot. I can see that the sky is the limit. I see that if you give the hand to somebody to accomplish their dreams, that you are helping yourself. So today, I want to really thank all of you for all the work that you are doing in a great country, in a great Ventura County. Also, I am putting my little grain of sand in here helping. I am in the board of Oxnard College now, trying to help, and I am in the EOPS, trying to help these people that don't have that much to also, to open the door of the dreams. But that is with education. That is with all the hard work that all of you guys are doing together with the community. Thank you very much, and it's not enough time to tell you the whole thing in here, but you give me an hour, I can do it.[1265.66][1265.66](LAUGHTER). So thank you very much, and have a great year.
Renee, I want to thank you. You're really an inspiration to all of us. You're a role model, especially for our children, and also for the American dream. If you can do it, all of us can do it, and I think it's important that we follow your example. And I love what you've done there, you know, with the writing the books for children, and I think it's important that they understand the reason that they should keep their place clean, make sure that the recycle is a health and safety issue, and also for the people to make sure they don't destroy the environment. And dreaming is very important, and that dreams come true for you, and I think it's important that all of us follow that, your example, and I want to thank you for sharing, and I can see it comes from the heart. Even though I didn't have your resume, but we didn't need it. You did a really good job.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for sharing today.
Thank you very much, and I hope that many, well, people in here, they can see that everything is possible if we work for it. If we don't like where we are right now, let's give a step to the front. That step is not going to take us where we want it, but it's going to take us for where we don't want to be. So let's start now. Today is the day.
Good. I think Supervisor Park.
Yeah, just also, thank you for coming. I have a copy of the book that the author signed, and I will pass it out, but it comes back to me.[1353.41][1353.41](LAUGHTER). And it is, it is very inspirational. I'm so glad that you have been able to take yourself from working and sorting trash to meeting the president of the country, you know? How special is that? And then to also, of course, help the youth there. And I agree with you, education is the key. Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
I just would like to thank Supervisor Parks on her last act as the board chair to find such an inspirational speaker here today for us for a moment of inspiration, and thank you for being so inspiring. It's really important for young people.
Supervisor Long?
Renee, if you could let our public know about the museum, when it's open for the public, for the Bird Museum, it's beautiful. You can see your passion there. I mean, it is an amazing education for our students, for adults, to really see where their education can go. Not everyone follows the same path, but I do know it's open to the public at certain times. Could you?
Yes, it's open 9 to 5, Monday to Friday. But we are not open to the public every day. You have to make an appointment. Also, we have a tour for the public the second Wednesday of each month, 3:30, also the last Friday of each month, 3 o'clock. And also, we have walk-ins. You can call 24 hours ahead, and so you can walk the museum, and it's not a guide tour, but you can walk in there. We have more than 1,000 or 2,000 birds on top of the cabinets. And also, we have two open houses, it's May and October. It really is a beautiful place, and I have more than 30 years in there. Like I say, I start from the garden to manage the museum right now, but it's really beautiful. Like you say, yes, all of this comes from the heart, because I love the work I do. The work in conservation is great. The work that the museum is doing is great, and so all of you are welcome. I'm going to give some brochures now that you can have more information about the museum.
And then also, if they wanted to get your book, if I recall, it was there at that museum, we could actually purchase that book if you wanted it.
Yes, it's in there in the museum. There we sell the books, and also you can find me on all the Facebook and those places and there. But the museum not only do work overseas, also, we have been working here in the islands of California, in Santa Clara River. We are working here, we have several projects with endangered bird species that the museum is working here in California also.
And Renee, the address of the museum number one and number two, the website for donations?
Yes.
Yes, the museum address, 439 Cae San Pablo, Camarillo, California, 93012. The telephone number is 805-388-9944.
Cae San Pablo.
Cae San Pablo, yes. And the website is wnc.org, and so there you can
Can donate.
Yeah, you can donate in there. So I hope that all of you and the public can make it in there, and again, I really appreciate, that was an honor to be in here, and so I never, I never thought being a shushan that I'm going to be in a place with great people that work for the country like you are. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Parks, thank you again. That was very inspirational, Renee. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's put your hands together.[1576.16][1576.16](APPLAUSE).
I think, Linda, that book got lost. I don't know.
You can buy your own.
Thank you so much again. Our next item is the Item 10, Consent Items 16 to 31. Is there any concerns from, or any from the supervisors? You've got a first, then we've got a second. Okay, we've got a first and a second. Please vote. Thank you, and that's approved. Brian, I don't have any public comments cards?
Two.
Where are they?
I don't have any cards.
Okay, our first person is Lisa Liberati, and then followed by Daniel Chavez Jr. Linda? Lisa, excuse me.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Lavalarti. I'm with the American Red Cross. I specifically, I'm the volunteer leader for Ventura County. I'm new, been here about three months, love it. I am a volunteer, I'm not an employee, and I love what I'm doing. So today, I'm here to promote our home fire campaign. We are, the home fire campaign is something that we do semi-annually. I'm going to go ahead and cue a video, and it will give us, it's about a minute, and it'll give you an update of, and then I can speak after.
So on Martin Luther King Day, we are installing fire alarms to as many homes as we can. We have a certain area mapped out in Oxnard County, or Oxnard. Our goal is to install 500 fire alarms. We're going in, and teams of three, we're going to check the fire alarms. If they don't work, we're going to check the battery. In the event that they're, they don't work at all, we're going to install new fire alarms. This is, I think, our third year of doing this, and it saves lives, absolutely saves lives. And I'll get to a personal story brief. So what we are looking for today is volunteers. We have six We have sixty volunteers, our goal is eighty. It is a difficult weekend, it is Martin Luther King Day, or Saturday, the fourteenth. Particularly folks that speak Spanish. Our neighborhood that we're going into, we're canvassing, is a high-risk neighborhood, largely Hispanic population. This area tends to have a lot of folks living in one home. So what we also do is we go in the home, we assess the home for fire safety issues like perhaps newspapers blocking a furnace, or a walkway or pathway that's not cleared out, so the folks that, if there's a fire, they can't get out of the house in time. Typically, it's two minutes that you have to get out of your home to survive a fire, which goes by very quickly. Fire spreads very fast, it's quite frightening. So we're looking for Spanish-speaking folks, my time's running out. I would like to say that I have a flyer that has the information for our website. I'll leave some business cards in the, in the back. I do wanna say that this year is the Red Cross Centennial Celebration for Ventura County. It's actually nationwide. So it's a big, big honor for us. We've been serving the United States for a hundred years. So we're gonna be celebrating and doing some community projects this year. Also, I would like to say, excuse me, I think I hit pretty much everything. I do wanna thank Dan Collier, who is the owner of Pizza Man Dan franchise. He's a terrific guy, I think you probably are well aware of him. He is one of our key partners in this program. He is feeding our troops, so up to eighty folks, and he offered, and it was his idea, to provide coupons for free pizzas to the homeowners who allow us to come in their home as an incentive to allow us in their home and to install and do the fire safety program within their home. And Dan's been a great part of it.
Thank you, Lisa. I know the Red Cross Home Fire Campaign is really important. I've been participating too with.
Oh, good.
With Melissa Livingston, you know, from HSA, you know, I think she's the chair now.
Yes.
And I think it's important that we check our, make sure that we have the fire.
Check all our fire alarms.
Alarms and so forth.
Check your smoke detectors, same thing, sort of.
And I know you need volunteers, and I know that Lourdes from my office and Jesse from my office are also gonna be volunteering for that.
Terrific, terrific.
And I'll be there also.
Thank you.
And I think it's important, my understanding is from Melissa, that Melissa, excuse me, that it's gonna be over in Durley Park, close to Durley Park, in the fire station off of Hill Street, Hill Street, and it's where you're gonna meet, is that correct?
We're meeting at Fire Station Three.
Which is on Hill Street.
Yes, yes. And that location was just changed, we had to shift to some unforeseen issues, so we just switched locations. It's a terrific location. We're thrilled that we can have our home base at the fire department.
The smoke detectors are extremely important. I know that we check, everybody should check their batteries, especially now with the winter months. But I, also, what I think is important is we're gonna have the Martin Luther King March that Saturday morning, and people can, you know, are invited to. I've been attending that also for the last twenty years, the march from Plaza Park to the Performing Arts Center. But I really wanna thank Melissa Livingston, I'm not sure if she's here now, but she's been very instrumental. And let's put our hands together for Melissa, because she's really done a good job for them. But I wanna thank you for sharing again, and those flyers are, you said there's a website for that?
Yes, and the website is www dot redcross, one word, dot org, forward slash C E N C A L H F C.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Is any questions?
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Our next speaker is Daniel Chavez Jr.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Supervisors, Ventura County Residents and Staff. My name is Daniel Chavez Jr. I'm a proud born and raised resident of the city of Oxnard. I wanted to take this opportunity just to congratulate Supervisor Saragosa and Bennett on the reelection, and Supervisor Long on her successful election. I remember two meetings ago at the marijuana, she was here before I got here, and I got here at eight-thirty, and she was here way after I left. I even made a comment to her, did you even leave this place at all and eat? She says she got a warm sandwich in the car, and she ate that, so I can see that you're very enthusiastic to get going. It looks like you're already starting very well so far. Yesterday, I addressed our Commission on Homelessness in the city of Oxnard in regards to the winter warming shelter. Last week, I addressed our Planning Commission as far as new housing developments that come into the city of Oxnard as well. I made the comments to our Planning Commission that housing development is important to the city of Oxnard, because we are the largest in the county. But it is also important that we tackle the issue when it comes to housing. That means giving first preference to our residents when housing developments are completed. When we have it be normal to have two to three families living in one house, or even one apartment, and our students in all of our school districts are thinking that's the norm, there is a problem with that. When it is normal to see a liquor store or establishment that sells alcohol saturated throughout South Oxnard, and that's considered normal, that's a problem as well. Last week affected families, neighbors, and our city, because it brought the city of Oxnard to its second homicide of the year, and we were only five days into the year. This is a problem that we are all gonna have to address. This is not about parties, this is not about genders, race, religions, this is about being a human being and addressing the violence in our communities. So I wanted to take the opportunity to congratulate the three supervisors, and hope that the supervisors continue to work within their districts with the local councils in addressing the issues with housing, homeless, and violence in our communities. Thank you.
John, let me just say, interesting.
Supervisor.
What you just said, which I think is interesting, there's a couple articles that came out, and we talked about, you know, in Ventura County, Ventura itself was ranked in the top twenty-five of the most expensive places to live and get a housing. I think it was like number thirteen, which is really difficult. That's a real tragedy in the sense that it's just hard, you gotta make so much money to do it. So we've gotta figure out what we're gonna do with housing and do that. And then on the other side, Oxnard, as you probably saw, was ranked as one of the, out of the top hundred fifty cities, was ranked number four, one hundred forty-five, the hardest places to get a good job. And so we've got, we've got a lot of work ahead of us in this county, because people's lives are affected by their jobs, by their housing, and it leads to a lot of other things that you talked about. So I appreciate you bringing that up.
I agree with you one hundred percent. I've been an advocate to my own personal city council as working to bring well-paying jobs into the city of Oxnard. In the third district, as well as a portion of the fifth district, we have a very high number of low-income families, and even very low-income families.
Yeah, I agree.
So I completely agree, housing is extremely expensive.
It's tough all over California, because about fifteen or sixteen of the top twenty-five of those places were in California. Part of our policies, we have to be careful of what we do, there's unintended consequences to some of this stuff, so I appreciate you bringing that up.
And Mr. Daniel, too, we, our CEO and our Tara, one of our staff members, met with the P-Bid Executive Board the other day on homelessness in downtown Oxnard. And we are working, you know, the county is working with the city of Oxnard, with the P-Bid, and making sure that they know where the funding is, and how they can apply, and how they can work with us. So we had a good meeting with Abel, Vince, and also with Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
You know, from the P-Bid. So we are working with the city of Oxnard on homelessness. And also, we did provide a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the emergency shelter program to assist, you know, the city of Oxnard and Ventura.
I know the city and the commissioners, they all appreciate the contribution from the county. Again, you know, we all know that a winter warming shelter is a temporary fix, not a long-term solution. So I know the commissioners that I addressed yesterday was to come up with long-term solutions that we actually solve. Not solve, but break through.
And we're looking for that for, you know, for single residences, so we can eliminate that armory project, you know.
And also, I just wanna say thank you for your dedication. It's really important that we do fight these battles and stick up for those that don't have that voice. And so I want to thank you as well. It's been a wonderful time getting to know you throughout this year, sitting side to side, but I hope we still have that communication, even if I'm on this side of the Dyson. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
I just wanted to point out that.
Daniel, we have Supervisor Bennett.
You know, in my perspective, the real key that is the next step for us here in Ventura County is to, is to build truly affordable, low-income housing, and to build it in existing urban areas, and it requires a commitment to challenge people in terms of the issue of density. And that's really the challenge, the next challenge that we have to face. So I'll look forward to working with you and support in terms of that as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Yes, I guess I will. And I just want to say, you are impressive. You're a young man, you're speaking out, and we have a room full of high school students that I think you can inspire too, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
We're good, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any additional speaker cards for the public comments. So our next item is board comments, and we'll start off with Supervisor Parks.
Chairman Saragosa, I just wonder, I know we've got, by the time we do our board comments, but we have the Foothill High School Cross Country Team here for their ten o'clock recognition. And being a former teacher, I know how desperate they are to get back to their classes today. So anyway, I think it would be more appropriate if it's, if it's all right with the board, if we held our comments until after we recognize them. They are going to get a brief tour of the Elections Department downstairs after this. And so I know they've got a full day, and they do have a schedule that would be helpful if we could keep them on.
Okay, so that's item thirty-two, we'll go ahead and take that. We're on time now for the ten o'clock time certainly. Supervisor Bennett.
Great. Well, thank you very much. I would like to ask a good friend and a tremendous coach, Ken Reeves, and his staff to come up, Charlie Fay, Jason Dinkler, I don't see Coach Dinkler in the room, but, all right, great. But Coach Reeves, if you would come on up to the podium, please. And then we have, as you can see, as always when we have teams in that have accomplished something remarkable, like winning the state championship, we're graced to have these healthy student athletes here in the boardroom with us. So I wanna welcome all of the Foothill Cross Country runners from the state championship, men's, boys, and girls teams. And I just wanna give a little bit of background here. Foothill is a new high school formed in two thousand, and they've just, it's really been an interesting journey to watch Foothill. But Foothill did not have competitive sports. The athletes competed at Ventura or Buena High School until three years ago. And three years ago, Foothill finally embraced the interscholastic competition themselves. And they were very fortunate. Some of the best coaches in the state of California stepped forward in various departments, and one of those is certainly Coach Ken Reeves. And they immediately qualified for the state meets, but this year, only three years after starting the program, they won the state meet. And not only did they win the state meet, but the boys set the all-time state record. Thirty years they've been keeping the record, they set the all-time state record in the state meet. And the girls, if I have this right, were, set the third fastest time, you know, out there. Just a remarkable program. But if I, what I would like to say, in recognition of Coach Reeves' accomplishments, is when I was a teacher at Nordoff High School, Coach Reeves, I was fortunate enough to get to work with Coach Reeves there. And every time that a parent came in and said, what could we do to, you know, try to ensure that our son or daughter's gonna have a successful time in high school, I said, have them run cross-country with Coach Reeves' guidance. And it's not because he's a great coach of cross-country athletes for running, which he is, but it's because, besides that, he really helps young people put life in perspective, put their high school experience in perspective, to develop a sense of teamwork. And I am certain that you just have young people here that are having a great experience, not just a great cross-country experience by being on the team. So Coach Reeves, I just wanna use this opportunity to thank you again for what you did for all those years at Nordoff High School, and now to give us an opportunity to do it here with Foothill students. I am sure you're enjoying it as much as you used to, particularly since you can focus all of your energy on it, and you're not burdened with all of the other assignments that we dumped on you at Nordoff High School when you were there. So if you'll help us properly honor and recognize your athletes, we're gonna wanna take a good picture when we're finished. But I captured a few of the highlights, but if there are other things that you would like to say for us, I'm gonna come down and bring the resolution and turn it over to you to make any comments you'd like in terms of recognizing your athletes that are here today. Thank you very much.
Welcome, Coach.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett covered our season very well. The boys were the fastest team ever in the history of the California State Meet for Division Four, which if any of you have gone to the movie and seen the movie McFarlane USA, that's the team's record we broke.
Wow.
Oh, wow.
And the girls were the third fastest ever in just our third year. I don't know if I'm supposed to introduce them individually, but I have no notes, and they're behind me, so this could be kind of scary.
They can, they can raise their hand, you know, once you mean.
But I might forget them.
Okay.
I'd first like to recognize if they're, if they're here or not, is our principal, Jill Bova, who is one of the forerunners of pushing for athletics at Foothill Technology for our Arlen students, and our athletic director, Emily Stevens. I don't know if they've made it yet, because they were in our class, they are, they are back there. So appreciate their support of athletics in our community and helping us develop a program as far as that. Introduce them individually? Yes, no? All right. First of all, I'll introduce the girls. Our number one runner was Lauren Carney, if you could come up, Lauren, or raising a hand? Okay. Second was Brianna Tefoya. Third, Blythe Blakeman, in only her second year of running ever. She was twenty-fifth in the state of California. Fourth was Olivia Burton, lives across the street from the Government Center.
Oh, good.
Fifth was Ada Tadeo, senior, second year of running. And digging deep down into the memory bank now, I'm looking out for, sixth was Cameron Becker, her first year of running. Thanks, that does. And seventh on that group that ran in the state meet was Hannah. Okay, also on the team was senior, junior Elizabeth Egbert, senior Emily Kinnaman, freshman Kami Coons, freshman Gretchen Sherry, senior Raquel Tadeo, and senior Aline Aguilar.
Okay, let's put your hands together.
The boys' team was led by Jared Rodriguez. He's a senior, he was second in the state of California. He started running as a sophomore, never run before, so he's doing okay. Our second runner was a sophomore named Henry Pick, his second year of running. He was eighth in the state of California. Third was Chris Cookta. He's a junior. He was all Ventura County. Fourth was Evan Pedersen. He also lives across the street from the Government Center, so he's run around here a few times. He was all Ventura County. Fifth, Alec Yamas, he's all Ventura County. Sixth was Brody Shore, he's a senior. And seventh was. And seventh was Trey Caswell, a junior, also a baseball player for us. Also on our state team was Senior Josh Ramirez, Senior Dan Thau, Junior Clayton Brossey, Junior Grayson McCoy, Junior Jacob Villasenor. And unable to make it today because he's got a physics exam in AP Physics is John Markku, so he's not here. But this is the California state champion in both the boys and girls. Only the third team in the history of Division Four to ever win both the boys and girls in the same year.
Thank you, Coach. And really, put your hands together. Thank you. Where's the principal?
Can I ask a question?
A question real quick?
Certainly.
My chief of staff, you know, says this, he was a runner in school, and he says, you know, one of the things about cross-country, it's very disciplined. Kids disciplined, do well in school. I heard some of your kids AP and do that kind of thing, and they really end up being great kids. And I'm glad you introduced them, in case they make a movie about you, about that. I wanted to see these kids, whoever played who in these parts. Who runs the 1,500 here? And what was their...
In the high school, you normally run the 1,600.
1,600, okay.
And across the board, if you're looking at different athletes here, Lauren was the county champion in the 1,600 last year as a freshman. She ran 504. Kami was third in Ventura County. She ran 509. Raquel was, excuse me, 509 also. So, most of our kids run the 1,600. Jared was 424. Henry, as a freshman, was 434.
So, what's the difference between a 1,500 to 1,600?
100 meters.
And that time.
Up to 17 seconds.
17 seconds?
Yes.
Okay, so he said he ran a 401, that was a pretty good time?
That's a very good time, yeah. We wouldn't kick him off the team.
You wouldn't kick him off. Hi, Brian. You're still, he's good, he's good, okay. Anyway, but talked about all the great kids and the grade, and what discipline this sport does for these kids, and so congratulations.
And Coach, I'd like to share too that my grandson also runs for St. Bonaventure-
Okay.
-cross-country, you know, so, yeah, we're in good hands here. Thank you so much, and thank you for all the team and all the boys and girls, or young ladies and young men. Thank you for the...
He had something he wanted to say, I wanted to say about that.
I'm sure you're going to share that after.
I can't remember, I'm old. I thought it was Mr. Bennett, so.
You want to share something else?
Well, first of all, St. Bonaventure's in our league, so I'm sure most of our young men and young women know your grandson.
Thank you.
And second of all, the beauty of the sport is there's no easy way to be good at it. It takes a work ethic.
You've got to work.
And the beauty of the sport is all the kids get along. It's, we have rivals as competitors, but most everybody ends up hanging out with each other afterwards. And that's kind of a little different from a lot of sports, and that's really the beauty of the sport. And that was the crux of the McFarlane movie, really.
That's right.
Jim White and his interaction with the young men at his school, and how they all work together.
Thank you.
So, we're going to, what we don't want to do is take a picture and have you guys blocked by all of this, so I'm going to ask you all to just rotate around, turn around. We're going to take the picture, you're going to face that way. So, if you can do the big curve this way, and if we'll put our coach right in the middle here, and...
Girls.
Yeah, we've got all the girls, as I said, all the girls on that side.
All the girls behind you. All our boys go behind you.
Yeah, all our boys behind you.
Where the good looking ones.
So, I want to get the moms' attention, but she has a camera. Brian, you're in my picture.
Are we going to get the front of your head or the back of your head? It's up to you.
Yeah.
Everybody who's sitting behind them, we can see you too, so just remember that. One, two, three. Let's take another one, just for fun. One, two, three.
And then we'll do it here in the center. Ready? One, two, three. And then one more. One, two, three. There you go.
They can run 100 yards in 17 seconds after running 1,500 yards. Most of us can't run 100 yards in 17 seconds for the first 100 yards.
I'm still amazed by their time. I mean, if anyone runs a mile, a four-minute, five-minute, they like lap me. It's crazy.
Okay, our next item is Board Comments, Item 12. Supervisor Parks?
It's been a lovely break, and can get energized to be back here. A couple of things, I was able to attend a ribbon-cutting at our new office and laboratory building at the Moore Park Water Reclamation Facility. Really a wonderful example of energy-efficient building. They have real timing data that they can get, and a very high-quality lab, so it's nice to be able to be there for that. I also attended a Southern California Association of Governments meeting, SCAG, and was at a Energy and Environment Committee that was chaired by Carmen Ramirez. And there were a couple of items there that I thought would be of interest to the Board. One, we had a presentation from the Los Angeles County Vector Control, and they were very adamant that rain barrels collect mosquitoes. And I just thought, you know, that's an interesting policy aspect, because as a government, we often are encouraging people to get rain barrels. But then, on the other hand, at this point, it seems like the technology's not there that can prevent the breeding of mosquitoes. It's something to consider. And also, another topic that of interest, and I mentioned it at the Transportation Commission, is that the Regional Water Quality Control Board requires that we not have zinc in our storm water, and yet tires essentially leach zinc. And so, it is a desire of many to see that it not be put in tires to begin with. But certainly, when we use things like crumb rubber on our landscaping, which we do at the Government Center, that could have the potential of releasing zinc into storm water. And instead of trying to clean it up at the end, it's better to just avoid it at the beginning. So, I would ask if our General Services Agency could look at that aspect and see, do some research, find out if that is indeed a pollutant source, and if so, to discontinue the use of that. I also was really impressed with the Star had a set of articles on Prop 47. Nearly 200,000 felonies erased by Prop 47, but some former felons don't know, was the title. Drug busts drop as cops question if they're worth even doing the drug bust. Former felons find new jobs and new hope after Prop 47. And then, two years after Prop 47, addicts walk free with nowhere to go. And I know we had something on our agenda today, looking at ways to assist addicts off of their addiction, but that continues that revolving door when you have that, and also crime into the community. But I just thought it was an excellent review, something that the state hasn't done, but the journalists did, and it was, I think, very helpful and something for us to learn from. I also would ask that we close in honor of the list that I have here, and I did want to call out two individuals. One is Oak Park School Founder Pat Manning. She was very instrumental in starting the actual school district for Oak Park. She was a deputy for State Assemblyman Paul Puriel, and who represented Oak Park in Sacramento. And as a result of that, she was able to encourage him to sponsor legislation to form the school district. And then, she was also the first school board, on the first school board back in 1977, and served on there for quite some time. And both Superintendent Tony Knight, Senator, past Senator now, Fran Pavly, had some really nice words for her. She was also one of the first staff members ever in the brand-new city of Agoura. And also, another sad loss is Darren Carr, who was a teacher at Newberry Park High School, very much loved. He coached softball, operated the clock at football games, and now is basketball games. But he had worked in the private sector for several years, but really wanted to pursue his passion for education, became a teacher. And I know that he is very much missed by the students and families in the Newberry Park area. And with that, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you very much. I'll try to be as brief as I can here. I'd like to ask the Board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, including Pat Weinberger. Pat Weinberger died at the age of 93 up in Ojai, a real legend in Ojai for her environmental activism. She almost, well, she certainly led the efforts to try to stop the open pit mining that was, the gypsum was planning on doing right on the outskirts of the city of Ojai. Would have brought 75 gypsum trucks a day through town. And she coordinated a hearing in the 1970s. 1,800 people showed up. A California senator showed up, and Undersecretary of the U.S. Department of Interior. And as a result of her organization, they decided to, the U.S. gypsum decided to drop their plans for the gypsum mine. I would also just like to ask, and particularly the press here, I'd like to ask everybody associated with the press and just people in the public to help make the public aware of a very scary thing that's happened. A member of my staff, Steve Offerman, got a phone call, and it sounded like his daughter screaming on the phone. "Dad, I've been kidnapped. I'm in the back of a van. Please help." And then, all of a sudden, another person took the phone, and they purported to be kidnappers, and said that they had his daughter, and demanded that he stay on the phone and immediately drive to the, to his bank to withdraw money. He had him on the phone, and at the same time, he was clever enough to, while he was driving, text his other daughter and had her call the police. And the police at 911 said, "This is a scam that's out there. It's going on. It's been happening in Santa Barbara, and it's now moving to Ventura County." So, you know, if you can imagine the terror that all parents would find, but these people were clever. They knew the name of his daughter, they knew what streets were, he was driving around. And so, there's something going on with this scam that's out there. But before people do something foolish or go through the terror of that, to the extent that we can get that information out to the public, I think it'd be very helpful for people who know that. Thank you very much.
And that's good information, too. Maybe the sheriff can also help us with that, and the DA's office, and put it on our website. Mike, Supervisor Long?
Thank you very much. First of all, myself and my staff would really like to thank all of the departments that made us feel so welcome. As you get nervous and are starting your first job, you show up to the building, and you're like, "Where do I park? How do I get in? Where's our office and computers?" It was all set. It was, we worked on it, set it up earlier in advance. So, on the third, when we walked in the door, the computers were there, there were pens, paper. It was very exciting to be able to have our nine o'clock staff meeting and be ready to go. And I wanted to thank everyone that was, made that happen, because I know it was a team of people, it's not just one. And we really wanted to say thank you, because we feel welcome, we feel a part of the team already, and we've only started since last Tuesday. So, it's been a week. But in that week, we've done some great things. We've hit it, the ground running. We've already had a ribbon-cutting with Valena Barvona's Farmers Insurance in Camarillo. We've gone to the Ventura County Transportation Coordination. Excited to state that we've approved the final money to finish up the Santa Paula Bike Trail. That's been going on for many years, and to say that it's going to be finished, that would be great. We've got calls from constituents that we've been fixing, and they're very excited about that. I'd also like to talk to the state for the IT Department. Thank you for getting our website up. It was ready on day one at 12:01, so that our constituents didn't miss a beat. That's what we are working on. We are following a great leader in our community, Supervisor Kathy Long, and she had 20 years of experience, and we appreciate and honor that, and we want to make sure that we don't miss a beat. I'm sure we will, but we're trying really hard not to. And I think with our staff and their knowledge and everyone else's, we're going to do great things for Ventura County. So, I just wanted to say thank you, thank you for everyone to make sure that that happens. One thing I did talk to people about is, some people don't know who I am or what my background is. And on our website, you can read about our bio. I've got my LinkedIn on there, you can see the resume. I'm a mechanical engineer in training from Cal State Long Beach. Worked myself up from engineering to a director of sales and marketing for an orthopedic company. So, I have the medical background of engineering, and really enjoy project management and making sure things get done effectively and efficiently. I've also been able to be on the Pleasant Valley School Board for four years. Passion is kids, I have two. And education is key to me. It's made me be able to get where I am, and I've seen so many people, when they do focus on what they want, to go for it. And I hope to grow our economy here in Ventura County, and also to make sure people are safe, and that we are fiscally responsible with our constituents' money for our county. And I know that we all work hard to do that. So, I just wanted to say thank you very much to everyone who's really welcoming us. I've said it once before, but, you know, education, you say it once, say again, one more time, and we'll all remember that. Also, I'd like to adjourn in memory, this list here, and also want to call out Duane R. Good and Corinne Ray Good. They passed away 11 days from each other, married for 65 years. He was in the U.S. Air Force, in Oxford Air Force, and then had a solo dental practice. And she was a substitute teacher, devoted into her volunteer work with the charitable and social organizations, Children's Home Society, Metal Arcs, just to name few. And they'll be missed by five children, six grandkids, and five great-grandkids, and they were residents of Camarillo. And then, also in Santa Paula, Ellen Mae Duarte Caldwell. She was a lifelong resident in Santa Paula during the World War II. Mae was a fighter dispatch at the Miraloma Flight Academy for beginning arm-air cadets. She was active in service in charitable organizations, and she will be missed by her children and numerous residents of artists. This list, sad to say, is long. There's quite a few, but since the last meeting, that's most likely why. And then, also, Happy New Year. We are starting a great beat, and I just know that 2012, 2017 is going to be a great year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Foie?
Yeah, thank you, and Happy New Year. I do want to journal people on this list, and a long list, but call out one, and maybe even Supervisor Parks knows this one, Ed Haddock.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and who was from Rancho Simi Parks District. He died during our winter break, and, you know, he was the Assistant General Manager of the district for 17 years. And so, a guy did so many different things, overshot Belme Park, sports facilities, the girls' softball complex, a couple of dog parks. The guy did everything, always involved in everything. And he was involved in the growth of Oak Park, you know, the community center and all those kind of things. So, it's tough. He just retired, and people are just saying, "I just saw the guy." That's a tough one. So, he'll be missed, too. So, also, I have a picture. We had a fire up in, outside of Wood Ranch over the holidays, we were gone, and you can see up in those hills and those rocks and everything else. And, you know, we always just think things- And, you know, we always just think things are going to happen, but our, our fire department, you know, showed up and did their tremendous job, and the great leadership, you know. And what it was, it was interesting, I had the opportunity to be with Vaughn Miller and Chad, and just going around and looking and watching and all the stuff going on, and you just see the leadership. You know, you're talking to, you're talking with Vaughn, and Vaughn's going, "Yeah, well you guys are doing a great job, Vaughn." But he goes, "Look at these, look at the Simi Valley Police. Look how well they're doing, they've given us our ability to do the job." And, you know, we deal with the sheriffs, and all the people that we deal with, they do such a job to make it easy for us. It just shows the kind of leadership that we deal with in our county, with people that are not looking themselves, but also the people that help support them and do this kind of thing. And we're just so fortunate, the leader. We have so many different leaders here, but here's something that was really interesting. Look at this picture. Look up close. There's our fire chief himself going up that hill with his pack on. You know, this is, this is the kind of leaders that we deal with in our county, that people are willing to put themselves into the same place, not just asking somebody else to get dirty and go do the work. This is the kind of stuff that we deal with. And I, I just thought it was just great that we had that opportunity to see these leaders do this kind of work, and I didn't want that to get, that to get missed. And Ms. Powers, I appreciate your, your leadership and all the different ones. You know, we had a tough meeting the other day in, out in Moore Park because of the water rates. You know, these farmers are just dying, some of these rates are going up 200, 300, 400%. I mean, they're just, they're husbands, wives together, looking to fear in their eyes about that kind of stuff. But, you know, I saw Michaela and Jeff Pratt, they're willing to take the heat. You know, there's the leaders being out there. So, Kelly, to you, I talked about that we have a great team that we work with, and these are the kind of things. When you see people like this, you know, no fanfare, I'm just coming up there, and all of a sudden, wow, there's Mark. You know, with pack on, with another guy, just going up to do his job. And just, it's just exceptional, the people we work with. And so I just didn't want that to go by. So thank you.
Thank you Supervisor, and also I'd like to thank the firefighters for their excellent job, and we have an excellent chief, and also we have excellent firefighters, and throughout the state, and especially here in Ventura County. Thank you for that. I'd also like to adjourn in memory of the folks on this list, and I want to call out an individual that lives now, Supervisor Long, in your district, but lived in Oxnard for years and years, and that's Tony Mulhart. I had the opportunity to work with, with Dean Mulhart in the Oxnard City Council for about 10 years, and I got to know the family well, you know, and I, we attended a mass the other day, we were at Santa Clara Church in Oxnard, and it was champ pack with people. But I just want to, you know, share that with you, that I'd like to adjourn in memory of Tony Mulhart, which was really a great person, and the individuals on this list. Additionally, I also would like to share that I attended the celebration for Ignacio Carmona in Oxnard. He turned 100 years, 100 years old at the Knights of Columbus, and he had the whole family there, and Mr. Carmona was very instrumental in helping out the Takasuki family during the internment camp issues. They had the Asahi Market there in Oxnard, and what he did, he took over that, that grocery store for the Takasukis and ran the grocery store for them, and when the Takasukis came back, you know, he handed the keys right back to the, to the Takasuki family, and without any money exchange or anything, just a friendship, so, really, really great, great men. And they asked him the other day, you know, "How old are you?" He says, "Are you 100?" He says, "No. I'm 102 days," he said. So, but he's well-attended thing. Also, the Center to the Sea, Ninth Annual Celebration for Sensitancy, we handed out thousands of gifts over to the kids over in Nylund Acres, which was really, really great. Also attended the United Farm Workers Program at the SET Office in Oxnard, and presented certificates to the farmworkers and honored them for their, for their diligent work that they do for the community. And also like to share that I'll be attending the Martin Luther King Walk this Saturday at Plaza Park, and it's going to be at 8:00 AM over in Plaza Park, and I've been marching with, with Martin Luther King folks for about 20 years, you know, and it's really, we have hundreds of people that march there at Plaza Park. And that's all I have. Thank you. And our CEO's office.
Thank you Chair, there goes. Just a few items. The county is looking for community volunteers to assist in the annual homeless survey. That is January 24th. Anyone interested, please contact Jennifer Harkey from our office, 658-4342. Also, the Homeless Continuum of Care Board, that new independent entity that's been set up, they received 1.9 million in HUD funding, plus two additional programs were funded, which is the first time I can remember an actual increase in this. So congratulations to Christie and Tara and the whole Continuum of Care Board for the direction they're going and really heeding the HUD guidance.
Including to Lutheran Social Services in Thousand Oaks, which we really appreciate, because there are homeless there, too.
That's right, absolutely. They've been, Lutheran Service has been a great partner. Also want to let you know that for the first time, there's a program to cover for inmates, inpatient hospital services. That has not been covered before. The Sheriff's Office has covered it out of their budget, and there's a Medi-Cal program now, and you had to declare a little letter of intent by last Friday, after some analysis by our CFO, Catherine Rodriguez, and consultation with Sheriff Dean, we decided to go ahead and move forward with that, because it's an opportunity. We can back out if, for some reason, we decided not to, but we're going to bring that to your Board at the next meeting, because I think it's a real opportunity to, to save some funds for the, for the Sheriff and the county. Wanted to let you know, too, that there's a Red Cross Blood Drive, January 26th, 8, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, right here in this building. It's the Battle of the Badges. And also coming up on January 20th is our Second Economic Vitality Meeting. This is, we're in the process of developing the county's first economic vitality plan. This is our second session of three. First one was very well-attended, great information. We're going to use folks' time wisely, and we'll keep you posted on that. The Management Council has their awards luncheon annual on January 21st, excuse me, 26th, at 11:30 at the Sarah Center. Behavioral Health is holding a mapping, leadership, and marijuana forum, emphasizing education. That's on February 2nd, from 8 to 11. And then finally, this is, we've been keeping our Board updated, we have developed the first time our own in-house Leadership Academy, the LEAP Academy, and we just had our first graduation a few weeks ago. There were 27 folks from 18 different departments, and really went very well, and so that program is off and running and about to start its second cohort, and want to recognize Betsy Swanson-Hollinger and Gina Rae Hendrickson for their leadership of this program. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Our next item is, item 14 is review and discuss the, and make assignments of members of the Board of Supervisors to various boards and commissions. And Brian, can you pass that, pass it on to the Board? And this list represents a fair and equitable distribution of assignments, including those assignments for the Chair and Vice Chair, and those that make more sense to the specific districts of that supervisor. The, they're color-coded, the white means no change, and the green reappointment, and the gray is no appointments. So I'm happy to hear from the Board members as to the discussion of the, of the additions or subtractions of the Board, Boards and Commissions assignments. And we have, what, about 37 or so Boards, Brian? And each Commissioner then picks up, you know, so many Boards and Commissions and serves in those Commissions, and there's Commissions that are mandatory, like VCTC and APCD and other Commissions that, that are mandatory. So if you look at them and see if, what do you think about those, those Boards and Commission assignments? And any questions, or Supervisors? Supervisor Long?
Thank you, yes. I did have some comments. I understand I'm low man on the totem pole. However, based on my background in engineering and the medical field and so forth, I wanted to make sure I request a thought of perhaps changing a couple of these items. The first one is the Medical Center Oversight Committee. With so many urgent cares in the San Paula Hospital and so forth, I would like to put my name in the hat, new to this process. I'm hoping that's what I, I get to do, for, for that committee. I understand Steve Bennett wanting to, to be in it for the hospital and all the new great things in Ventura County, and I completely respect that. But with looking at our district as myself and the staff look at it, there's, a great source of it is in our district, so therefore, I'd like to put my name in for that one. The second one is the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency.
You want gold coats, Brian?
No, no. I'm trying not to take on too much, because I know this is my first year. However, there are certain things that are extremely important in our district, and water, as I agree with Steve, being one of them. And with Fox Canyon, there's so much water that is in our third district, and to make sure that our constituents are well-represented on that, I'm asking to put my name into that hat. I understand that the new term expiration is, well, anyways, I know we can move things around, and so I'm asking for that one as well.
For which one is it?
For the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management. And then the third one is the Channel, California State University, Channel Islands. I just want it noted that I'm okay with being as an alternate on that. However, I'm extremely ecstatic about the engineering department that's going on. It is in our backyard with the District Three, and so, either way, I'm not asking to be moved on that, but know that at any point, any of you do not want to be on that, I would definitely step up for that one, because I think it's extremely important for the education and the economy of our community. So those are the three. Other than that, thank you very much for being generous and understanding the needs of our district.
Let me share, then the Supervisor can then talk about this. One of the reasons for the assignment to the medical oversight for Supervisor Bennett is because of the experience, and also, and the Supervisors, and he can share that, we have, I know you have Santa Paula in Hospital, but VCMC, and then we have the expansion of VCMC here in Ventura. So that was one of the thoughts that we had before, and also the experience. Fox Canyon Water Supervisor's been there for a long, long time, and we have a lot of concerns with water, as we all know. And again, he's got the experience on that, and that's one of the reasons we, I assigned him to that. And then the University of Channel Islands, we've had representatives from Camarillo and from, from Thousand Oaks in East County, but we have not had any representation from West County, and that's one of the reasons that I wanted to be in that Oversight Committee at Channel Islands University, which gives, you know, Oxnard, Ventura, Ojai, some, some understanding on the process there. So I'm not sure if, if the Supervisor likes to...
I would like, number one, I really appreciate Supervisor Long's interest in the Medical Oversight Committee, and I actually think it's very appropriate, while, as you're new coming in, because it's a great way to, to, I think, get introduced to a complicated system, and you have a medical background, I mean, you have a background in the field, but it's still a very complicated system. So I think it really would be very healthy to have you on the committee. I think in terms of you being on the committee, what would make the most sense is, for 15 years, I have not been on that committee since I, since I came on board, even though I have the hospital in my district, and this strikes me as, as an appropriate time for you to be on with Santa Paula Hospital being in your district, and me to be on with the county hospital being in my district. So it, I don't see it having to be you versus me in terms of being on, but it's probably a healthy time. Supervisor Foy has probably learned about everything that he can learn. I shouldn't say learn everything, but he's, he's certainly gotten a great, rich background in the county hospital. So another option, an option that I'd be fine with, would be to have you come on and have Supervisor Foy, occupy Supervisor Foy's seat, so that two Supervisors could get the benefit of hospital oversight experience, which would be good for our Board to have, have more of that. So I don't oppose that at all. With regards to Fox Canyon, we're, we're, we're right in the middle of, you know, the whole new groundwater sustainability planning, et cetera. I feel strongly that continuity is important at this point in time, while we're getting all those plans put together and stuff. So that one, I feel strongly on. But in terms of hospital oversight, and I'm agnostic in terms of the, your request about the Channel Islands Oversight Committee. So anyway, so that's the other possibility, is that Supervisor Long, I was saying Supervisor Foy while you were talking, that the other possibility would be for her to occupy her, your seat, if, if we wanted to get her an opportunity to get up to speed after 15 years of waiting to be on the hospital oversight committee myself.
You know, don't bother, all right?
Supervisor Foy? You waited 15 years. Well, you know, it's interesting, that's an interesting committee. First of all, I wonder why it only has two Supervisors on it?
Because you can't have three.
You can't have three.
Brown Act.
Yeah, right, but there's only, it's an interesting voting, because there's only two vote, but, anyway. But, you know, I really do appreciate that. I think it's important, I like that piece, I think it's important to what we're doing. So I really don't want to get off that. I thought that maybe you never were on it, because you don't want something like that right in your district, something big and all that stuff, and so...
I have to tell you the truth, I mean, it's...
I know there's been some controversy there, and it's nice to be the outsider on that.
I welcome Supervisor Long's interest in it. I would like her to get up to speed. It's not something that I'm trying to grab for four years or anything else, but it, I tell you what I feel like, I feel like I should get some experience with hospital oversight if I'm going to be here all of that time. So I'd be happy to look at this issue again, you know, after getting some experience. So if you're interested in staying on...
Yeah, yeah, I really do. I like it, I think there's some great things out there, and I like part of the piece that, where we're going, a lot of stuff going on. And there is no question, because when you're up here, Linda probably has a lot of understanding, John, you probably, because you're just around it. I think, I was thinking for, possibly if she wanted it, you, I forget you had a medical background, but the other side was the, how quick you could learn some of the stuff that's just by hearing it, versus what we've heard over all the years being here. But, yeah, I'd really like to stay on. I mean, that's fine, if you want to come on, if you think it's important for you.
Supervisor Long, I think, in the future, if they'd like to, you know, maybe an idea would be if, if anybody wants to change...
Yeah, so Stephen, I've done that on, re-switched and stuff.
And I'm fine with that. What this is, is an option, is a place to comment and make this discussion. So I think it's good, I understand where everyone is coming for, but let's move on to Fox Canyon. And so with that, is there an alternate that I could put, take that spot instead? If you're, I understand your strength in water and so forth, and I understand we're going into very large issues here.
And I'm currently, I'm currently the alternate at Fox Canyon.
Right. And you're still hoping to keep that, or would you be looking at switching?
No, I think it's important that I keep that, you know. In fact, I was at primary for a while in Fox Canyon, and I think it's really important to, to the Oxnard area and also to the Channel Islands area that, you know, that I stay as the alternate on that. I think it's important that we do that. But in the future, you never know, we might just look at...
Does Fox Canyon, is it?
Fox Canyon groundwater?
Yes.
Is that your district?
If you look at the map on the water districts, it, there's, I'm the largest part of it, and then there's John, and then there's Steve, excuse me. The different, you know, you can keep going. So it really affects what we have. And, and so, to me, if, if we're not able to have a place at the Board, then we'll definitely be in the audience to make sure that we, we don't miss anything.
One of the things that I, hopefully that you can, I'll be out with it, I propose in that you take as AWA, the Association of Water Agencies. And I have that assignment in yours, and it's extremely important, because we have quite a few of the farmers there, quite a few of the mutuals, we have United there, we have Kayegas there, and really, that's a really important, AWA is a really important Board to belong to, and, and because you wanted water, is one of the reasons I also hopefully place you there, too.
And I appreciate that. Thank you.
And the university?
The university, I, I understand and I respect, and I've been on that campus so much and in speaking for the campaigns, I, I agree that it's important that we have representation from the West Side, and I think that's fine, but just know that I, I am interested in that.
I would just want to share with you, when I was a Oxnard City Council member, I belonged to the Campus Planning Committee when it first started, and we were planning the, the housing there, the dorms, and in fact, I was there when we came up with the, with the library. So I was there with the Campus Committee for quite a while, for several years, you know, prior to that, and, and I believe right now that it'd be kind of appropriate to have some representation for West County in, in the Channel Islands University.
And I, if I may, on the Cal State Channel Island side authority, I've been on it for some time. It is in my district, because we be district and all, but I'd be happy to step aside. I have one issue there that I'm very strong on, and that is that they don't mothball their, their treatment, or their energy plant there, and I'm going to be on the Energy Alliance now, so I'll just throw that out there, but if you'd like to take my spot, I think I was going to go become Chair this year, but I'm, I'm happy, I'm sure they can work it all out, and I'd be glad to have you take that on if you'd like.
That would be great.
So then, Brian, we can make that change in? Is that, you're okay with that?
I am okay with that.
I am okay with that. Thank you. I respect your desire to want to do things that you think are important for your district, and it is a wonderful collaborative partnership. They have a new president now, it's probably a nice time to have some new faces on the Site Authority also.
Thank you.
So would that change? Any other changes from the board?
Healthy discussion. I move the recommended action with the one change on the Channel Islands.
The Channel Islands, okay.
I guess I'm stuck with GoCA.
Okay, first and a second. All in favor? Please vote. Okay, that's approved. Thank you so much for that. And the next item.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, but that was a lot of work. And again, I want to thank Brian, you know, our clerk and, and my staff for really working on it very diligently. Thank you so much. Our next item is the review and approval of the January to December 17 schedule. Is there any concerns of the?
I have a suggestion, and that is that April 4th, that we may take that one off as a day where we're dark, and then if we're needing, if it's needed, that we could bring that back on.
Can we put that up on the April 4th?
That's good.
To cancel that.
If you have one for everybody, that would be great.
Brian, sorry, let's pass that up.
I know part of our goal too is to try to not have four meetings right in a row, which also made it very difficult for a lot of the staff. Leroy, are you shaking your head yes to this, Leroy? Because you guys had some open, because I looked at some areas. We had March, we had the 28th, the 7th, the 14th, and 22nd, 21st, and then we also in May had four themselves right in a row.
So, yeah, we will have four in a row there.
Yeah, we had, we had two of them in four in a row. So I mean, so if, I'd like, you know, maybe two in a row, give the staff a break, do it again, and then maybe the 14th of March, and then the 9th or so of, of May would be a good, that way we'd have.
What day was that again?
I was just asking for April 4.
Yes, I see that.
And then, do you support that Supervisor Foy?
Yes, I support that, yeah. It's just the four before that.
Would you want to switch?
I don't want to switch, I just don't want to have four.
I mean, we're off on the 28th. I, I'm just a little concerned that we're, that it'll only, there'll be only two times in the month of April.
Two times in April. But we have four in May.
That's what I'm saying, but we have four in May, which it seems, you know, pretty tough.
We should be able to take care of business. That should allow us to take care of plenty of business.
Well, I would think so, because usually, I just noticed that besides some of the big things we've had, once we have two in a row or so, then the meetings get real short, there's not a lot to them, and then, you know, that kind of a thing. And it's just, and these people do a lot of work to prepare, just as much for a meeting that's two hours long or a meeting that's eight hours long. So, well, it may be then if we have Supervisor Parks' situation, I guess I'd hate having four, but I, the fourth I think is important. I know that's her anniversary or something. My birthday, close to that in seconds.
I meant it was your birthday.
I know you do, it's my birthday. You're such a wonderful, I love that. Anyway, but maybe then May, we just move the 9th then so we can just have three in a row, I mean, three there.
So move it to?
Yeah, we have, that way we'd have a couple.
Except I know that we'll be starting budget sessions in May, right? So we may need those meetings in May.
Yeah, I'm just not sure if we have, need that much, but Mr. Parks has done a good job of putting.
How about if we move that to the 25th?
What, 25th of what?
Of April.
25th. Well, then you'd end, okay.
Then you have.
Then we have six, we have six in a row. Okay, wait a minute.
That's too much. Please note that I will not be attending the February 28th. I'll be for the NACO legislation.
The 28th of?
Of February.
Let's just cancel that now, then, that's good.
I'm just letting you know, so if any four-fifth vote, you don't get it.
So what's the pleasure of the board in the 4th?
I would just like to come back and explore this. I'm fine if Supervisor Parks has a conflict on 4th, I would, what I would recommend is that we drop the 4th, but put the 28th back in.
Fifth, do you mean the fifth?
The 25th.
28th of March, back in.
Oh, oh, I see.
So we keep the same number of meetings, we just, we just.
Oh, I should move it to the 28th.
Yeah, move the meeting of the 4th to the 28th.
So.
I feel, I think that's more appropriate.
But that's, that puts you four in a row again.
Yeah, and I just don't see that as the end of the world. I think that's how, how we did this for a long time. I think we.
The 28th of March will be the RDP 21 conference, so we, John and I will not be able to do that.
You're absolutely right, I forgot about that, yeah.
Just to know.
We're going to be in DC.
DC, yep.
Yeah, on the 28th of March.
There's also the potential of adding the 25th of April, so we have three meetings in April.
That's what I was saying.
And then in May, taking out one of those meetings, so we don't have four in a row.
So we need to do that, okay. All right.
So maybe we take off May 2nd, you think?
We drop, we drop, we drop the 4th then.
Add the 25th?
And add 25th?
And then we could drop the 2nd of May, so we have three meetings in May.
And then drop.
And then February 28th, I won't be attending. Will you still be having a meeting, or do you want to drop that one?
Well, normally, normally what we do is probably not schedule any items that require four fifths and those kind of, that's what.
Sounds good. Just wanted you to make sure.
So let's say, okay, we remove the 4th.
Remove the 4th.
Add the 25th of May. And then remove May 2nd. Okay? Is that a motion?
I'll move that item as stated by the Chair.
Okay. All right. Got a motion by Parks?
I'm sure, Brian, you'll find a way to drop a few out while you redo this.
And a second by, by me? Okay, let's vote. Okay, thank you. Okay, our next item is, our next item would be a time certain, item 33, and that is a, it's a public hearing, second reading and presentation by staff?
33, item 33.
Item 33. So we, you have a presentation by staff? Who's our staff member in that? Supervisor Bennett?
I believe staff put this on, but it is simply the second read of the, of the ordinance that we, the change that we made at our last meeting in December, Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency. We had originally made the modification that if you're submitting an alternate plan, that you, we would, we would extend that, the new well moratorium, so that we could have public comments in case we wanted to extend it further than that. Subsequent to having that, I think information came in, in my mind, that justified that what we ought to do is what we have here with our, our new ordinance, which is have the new well moratorium last until there is a new plan or until the state approves the exemption from creating a plan that Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency submitted. That's also the item that I mentioned earlier during agenda review that they had asked for extension. So anyway, here for.
Okay, any questions of the board?
Oh, yes. Do we want to hear public comments first, or?
The board, they'll go to, I got two public comments. Go ahead, board member.
All right. First, first of all, when I'm reading the subject line, going back, as you know, I was sitting on the other side of the table and I was here for the urgency where we pushed it for five months and understood that this was an urgency due to the filing of the alternate plan. And then it was brought in to an amendment of the board meeting in which we had our first hearing. And so reviewing that and then coming back to the second reading. However, is it truly a second reading when we're now adding four watersheds? I thought this was only for the Ojai Basin?
It is, it is only for the Ojai Basin.
Okay. And have we had public notice and discussions there on, on this matter?
We had, we had the first of public hearing here.
But yes, but it was in, in adjournment, in amendment of our board meeting, and most of those come out really short before the meeting. Was there enough time for our public to actually understand what's going on? I, I know going door to door, a lot of people don't know what the board of supervisors are doing. And so my question is to make sure that our public has enough time to understand this because, I'm asking this because we've already had an urgency where it's a 90 days and a 60 days, and therefore I'm concerned on the push to get this in, instead of making sure that it's set in a timely manner, especially with the holidays where everyone is.
But I think the item was a gentize, right, Supervisor? It was a gentize and we had a, a first public hearing on the item and now we're in the second.
Okay, because the description on the subject line did not include the amendment prohibition of new water wells in four, four watersheds in the unincorporated area. The subject line was the amending prohibition of new water wells in the unincorporated area. And when we were discussing it, it was in Ojai. And so my concern, when we're talking about ordinances and so forth, is how it affects other areas, because we might take this same ordinance and apply it to other water areas and so therefore. Also, another note I had on here is I'm reading the water ordinance and there is no definition for significant adverse impact. So I'm trying to understand who makes that call? What are the factual information for it? I didn't see it in the ordinance. And, and so that's where I'm trying to understand and figure out where, where you're going with this. The other thing is on ordinance, section 1D, it says current prohibition may expire within the basin, and our suggestion would say that it will expire within the expiration to note significant adverse impact. That's it. And then also, when we're reading on section 48, 2, 6.2, the exceptions of the water well. You're first talking in number A, and this I would ask city council, maybe for their opinion on this. My concern is the contradictions. We're stating in a statement number A versus F, in which we talk about water well, water well permits for the repair, modification, or replacement of an existing permitted well or legalized non-conforming water. That's all great, but then you come back and say for F, you call that out again on the alternate plan that you cannot. And my concern for our district, if this was to be applied, and I've seen that so many times when we make law or ordinances and policies, that it gets, well, we've done it already here, we're going to take it over to the other ones. And my concern is here in F, that we, it's supposed to be approved by the DWR, and then we also put in or determined termination may be made by the Ventura County Watershed Protection District. I am not understanding if this is a sustainably maintained groundwater management association, why we're putting the Ventura County Watershed Protection District involved in this. And then also, what other things? With, and it states, without a significant adverse impact of surface or subterranean supply of waters. I feel like we're writing this as a capture-all versus we're talking about the wells, we're now talking about groundwater, the surface water. That is of concern to me as I read this. And I want to make sure that if we're going to put an ordinance together, that as our city council, we can launch it, and then it makes sense and it's factual, and that all of our farmers and our companies that want to do wells can do it. Because I also concerned, like you state, the high water prices that are now being, coming up, those people might decide that now they need to get a well. And they, or they had one and they weren't repairing it, but now they can't. So I'm trying to make sure that we're making the right calls, and I have great concern for this.
If, if I could, Justin, I know we're going to have some public comments, so we can, we can, but the one thing I do want to address is your comment about this, will, will this apply to wells in your district, et cetera? This ordinance only applies to groundwater sustainability agencies that have submitted the alternate plan. The deadline for submitting the alternate plan was December 31st, 2016. Only one groundwater sustainability agency submitted that, and that is the Ojai Basin. So this, this does not apply and will not apply to the other basins. So it's, it's very narrowly focused on the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency. So this ordinance won't spill over in effect. Also, the provisions in here that you refer to in terms of what happens if you have to repair your well, et cetera, these are the same provisions that we have in Fox Canyon. And for years, we've had a ban on new wells in Fox Canyon. And that ban on new wells has been strongly supported by the ag industry, by the pumpers in Fox Canyon, with these same provisions in there in terms of, but if you have a well that needs to be repaired, you have these exceptions that you can do. So it follows the same safeguards as, as those do.
Okay.
I, I can agree and disagree. So let me lay it out that way.
Okay.
The question I have on this is, would an extra week make much of a difference?
Right.
In terms of approving this?
The request is for much more than an extra week, and I, I, I don't think it's appropriate for us to delay. I think it's better for everybody to know what the rules of the game are as they're meeting, as this is being dealt with at the state, they've already submitted their plan to the state, as this is being dealt with at the state, for everybody to know that it's, that when, that it's, that state action would end this if the state approves this. So I do think it makes a difference.
So it is something that is time sensitive? That was just the question. For a point of that, the concern of people having, you know, during the holidays and all that, to have not time to, to take a look at it, if, but you're, and you're also saying it only affects Ojai, correct?
That's right. It only affects the Ojai Basin. And why don't we hear the comments about what their, Bryce and I was, and I'll be happy to address.
Well, thank you. Then I am going to open the public hearing, and we have a couple of speakers. We have Lynn Jensen, followed by Peter Candy. Peter, okay, come in. Got five minutes each.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Peter Candy. I'm general counsel to the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency. Board members asked me to come speak to you because they have not had adequate time to look at the new proposed revisions to this ordinance, and they formally requested an extension of time so that they can actually review these and discuss them and consider them at their board meeting on the 26th. So, you know, having submitted that request, you can consider it. There are, there's at least one big legal issue with respect to these amendments, and that is, is that the proposed changes insert a new discretionary permit authority, bestow upon the Watershed Protection District, a new discretionary permit authority that did not previously exist. This under the LAFCO authorities is a latent power, presumably, that the special district has, the Watershed Protection District, and as a latent power, before the Watershed Protection District can exercise such a power, or a new function essentially, it needs to go to LAFCO. The legislative body of the Watershed Protection District, which I believe is your agency, needs to adopt a resolution first at a public hearing, and then that resolution needs to go to LAFCO before there can be this expansion of a function, a fundamental function of the Watershed Protection District. So that's an issue there that I think you need to consider in conjunction with our request for a continuance, as well as just stepping back from the issue entirely, that this move was in response to the management agency's decision to move forward with an alternative demonstration as opposed to a groundwater sustainability plan. As is pointed out and discussed in depth in the alternative demonstration that was submitted, the Ojai Basin is unique from other groundwater basins in Ventura County. The Ojai Basin is not in overdraft. There are, there is no evidence of these undesirable results that you have in other areas of the county. The basin has been sustainably managed, has been operating within its sustainable yield for a number of decades, and therefore qualifies to, to proceed with the alternative demonstration as. as compliance mechanism under the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. I invite you to go and read the alternative demonstration. It's a 44-page document. It is a compilation of all the best data and evidence that not only the Groundwater Management Agency has collected over the last decade or so, but also the Watershed Protection District. If you go read the Watershed Protection District's discussion of the Ojai Basin, it's consistent with what the alternative demonstration is saying. So essentially, the agency doesn't believe that the basin is being mismanaged. And the reason for this ordinance and the urgency back in December and now the effort to extend the prohibition, the supposed protection, is because, what? The agency's not doing its job. I think effectively that was the impetus for this. And the Groundwater Management Agency disagrees with that. And all the evidence is laid out in the alternative demonstration.
Thank you, Mr. Candy.
Thank you.
We have Lynn Jensen.
Good morning, Lynn Jensen with Ventura County Colab. VC Colab does not support the passage of this revision to the urgency ordinance. We agree with the OB GMA president that the agenda item should be continued until the OB GMA board has a chance to meet and discuss this item with their attorney. This item has not been discussed at an OB GMA board meeting so far. The Groundwater Management Act, we believe that the county is overstepping its authority under the SIGMA, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, with the proposed language requiring that the Watershed Protection District, a county agency, determine whether the construction of new water wells or modification or repair of existing wells can occur in the groundwater basin without significant adverse impact to the surface or subterranean supply of waters within the watershed in which the groundwater basin is located. We believe that this step forward will cause harm to our VC Colab members, other landowners in the county, and also well operators. This is essentially a determination of sustainable management of a basin. The Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency is the groundwater sustainability agency for the Ojai Basin, the GSA. And while the county has the authority to permit water wells and ensure that they're mechanically sound, per SIGMA, we do not believe it can make unilateral sustainability decisions for basins that already have a GSA, as is the case with the OB GMA. We are not arguing whether a well moratorium is or is not prudent in the Ojai Basin. Rather, we believe the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency must decide on such a course of action, as you said, Supervisor Bennett, in the Fox Canyon. We believe that the Ojai Basin GMA must decide on such a course of action with the representation of its board. And while this ordinance currently targets the Ojai Basin, future revisions could be made to extend to other basins. We do believe that there may be in the future some basins that come to the DWR and ask to put in an alternative plan. Perhaps they petition DWR to do an alternative plan on some of these new agencies that may be formed in the future. According to SIGMA, the counties are supposed to collect and share groundwater data while empowering local water agencies to manage groundwater sustainability in an open public process that respects overlying and other property rights. When the countywide moratorium was passed, we were led to believe that the intent was to encourage newly-formed GSAs to prepare a plan, supported by their boards, and file them with DWR in a timely manner. And OB GMA did just that. There's no need to rush this revision to the moratorium. The OB GMA needs time to review the language and respond accordingly. And in contacting their office, there's been no run on well permits in anticipation of filing the alternative plan. In fact, the OB GMA was closed over the holiday period opening just yesterday. And the urgency ordinance that was passed on December 6th extended the moratorium for five months. There really is no time necessary to do this in the next week or two. There's plenty of time to allow the OB GMA to review and prepare a response to the item. We agree with the OB GMA president, Jerry Conroe, that the agenda item should be continued until the board has a chance to review and discuss the item. And we see more reason to not, for the board of supervisors, to forge a good relationship between the county and the OB GMA and reconcile differences before adopting such an ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. I don't have any additional speakers. Anybody else who wants to speak on this item? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and then go back to the board of supervisors for any additional questions.
Thank you. My first question's for county council. Have the, the question being brought up, that provision has been in our well moratorium, not just this one, but in our other well moratorium, which is an opportunity for the Watershed Protection District to allow somebody to be exempted from our moratorium, if I understand it. So anyway, could you respond to the contention of the attorney?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just trying to focus, because I think the language is not part of this amendment. You're talking about other parts of this ordinance, right? There's a provision in this ordinance that was borrowed from the other county Watershed Protection Ordinance that allows for a variance, for wells to be permitted in certain hardship situations. I forget the terminology that's used. And that basic premise is to prevent unlawful takings of property, so it allows for exceptions. And we just borrowed that same language as in the existing ordinance and the existing practice and incorporated it into this ordinance. But that, as I'm reading it, that's not part of this amendment before the board today, but that's part of the background. And have Mr. Bwada here, who is the advisor to Watershed, I mean, the Fox Canyon Board and is very familiar with these areas. And I think that's, did I say anything incorrect there?
No, no, I believe those comments were accurate. But I don't believe it, at the same time, it was the intent to have the moratorium exactly mirror what Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency did. So there may be some differences between the two. But I don't have that.
The contention that we have to go to Lafco before we take action, do you agree or disagree, County Council?
We disagree with that.
Okay. Thank you. So I wanted to clear up that legal issue first. And the role of the Watershed Protection District, and I appreciate Supervisor Long's concerns about that, that really is so that if somebody, as county council said, so that we don't have a legal taking, so we don't say, sorry, we have an ordinance and there's nothing, nothing you can do about it, you have to, you know, we have a ban. And this is to allow appropriate exceptions from the ban. It's not to empower the Watershed Protection District to go around and start making determinations as to impacts, et cetera. It's to make sure that we don't do any illegal takings, which is why we had that provision in there. And I see county council nodding in agreement with that. So I would also like to point out that as this moved forward, in fact, as I'd asked, I have a PowerPoint slide that gives everybody a little bit of the history, timing-wise, in terms of this. So this, it's coming up here. It's just one slide, so, all right. So this slide will show you that I submitted the board letter on December 8th. And on December 8th, I made personal phone calls myself to the executive director of the Farm Bureau, representing the ag interest, letting them know about that, John Chris. I also called OB GMA Director Roger Essex, letting him know about the fact that I had submitted this board letter. Now, OB GMA had a meeting scheduled for December 16th. If they wanted to discuss this at their December 16th meeting, they certainly had time to agendize this item if they chose to at their December 16th meeting. We then had our hearing and took action on this on the 13th. It was publicized in the Ojai Valley News. It was certainly, so there was no, this was, there's no attempt for this to be not transparent. Made those phone calls to both of those people, representing people on quite a few of the constituents involved in here that might be most involved. We didn't hear anything from anybody from OB GMA on December 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th, 15th, 16th. That's all well before we all broke for the holidays. No request for a delay or anything else, not until yesterday afternoon at 2:30, did we get the one contact from Mr. Conroe asking for delay. So I don't believe that the contention that Mr. Conroe puts in his email is, I guess, one of the problems that I have with OB GMA is constantly having that kind of misrepresentation. The misrepresentation was that there was no notification to them and that's simply, you know, not the case. So the other thing I would point out is that on December 14th, if you look up at that schedule, the only representative on the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency, there are five votes on that agency. The only one that represents a general-purpose government agency is the city of Ojai. So the city of Ojai, I would offer, has a broader mandate and concern as a general-purpose agency, representing all the citizens of the city of Ojai. And they voted unanimously, that's the new mayor, Johnny Johnson, had already been sworn in, and the four council members, Wirick and Haney and Blatts, the council members all unanimously voted against the submission of this alternate plan that the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency was proposing to submit. And I shouldn't, and as they point out, the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency points out, it's not a plan. It's really a request to not do a plan. And so I will take the comments that were well said by Ms. Jensen, that the intent, when we originally did the ordinance, the intent was to have the ordinance be in place until agencies did a plan that gave us confidence that they, that there had been this thorough planning. The Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency has decided not to do that plan. So somebody has to say, hey, that's legitimate, that that makes sense, that it's been properly vetted, before you start opening up new wells in the Ojai Valley. Because if you open up new wells in the Ojai Valley and people are trying to make plans, I have constituents contacting me saying, what are the rules? That's all I want to know is, what are the rules right now? And that's why I think it is appropriate for us to be clear what our rules are at this point in time as they move forward. But I would offer to you, what's one of the groundwater, what's one of the water equation problems in Ojai? Is that as Lake Casitas is dropping, and fortunately with the rain, we may have this postponed, but nobody knows what's going to happen, as Lake Casitas has to put more and more restrictions on people getting water from Lake Casitas, you will find more and more people, and I have constituents that have already contacted me and say, because of the Lake Casitas restrictions, I want to put in a well. When those people put in a well, they then keep their water consumption rates higher than they would be if they had to live with the constrictions in Lake Casitas. Then, when their well goes dry, and the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency acknowledges that it is a bowl and the outside wells go dry much faster than the inside wells, that you now have a higher level of demand to come back onto Lake Casitas. So it is a complicated issue, and it's one that I think with the, with the Ojai City Council not in support of the basin not doing a plan, with so many residents expressing significant concern about a plan not being created, this is the appropriate safeguard for everybody, so we don't have new wells going in before the state actually approves this. So anyway, I hope that those, I realize water is a complicated issue and it is an easy issue for people to take one slice of it and sort of drill down or present that in a way that makes it difficult for policymakers to come up with policy. But it was, well, we made a good faith effort to make sure people knew about this, and we heard nothing from the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency, all the way from the first notification, phone call in December 8th, until yesterday at 2:30. So with that, I think it's appropriate for us to have a second read so that people have confidence in knowing what the rules of the game are, as the state takes their time to evaluate this request by the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency, as to whether they should or should not do a plan.
Any additional comments? Supervisor Long?
Could I ask for you to state what the significant adverse impact is? What is that definition?
Oh, that's great. I meant, when I say it's great, it's because as you asked that, I realized I had not responded to that. You know, that is something that water experts and everybody else has to, you know, have to determine. And so it depends under what context it's being used in. But in the context of allowing somebody to avoid our moratorium, it's different than potential, I shouldn't say, it's not a different threshold, but it, but it has a, it has a different implication than in these groundwater sustainability plans. For example, the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency is submitting their request to not have to do a plan because they're saying, we don't have any significant adverse impacts. That is something that I would suggest we want to make sure water experts really review before they either approve that they, before they approve they don't have to do a plan or say, no, you do have to do a plan. So what, what you're asking for in terms of Mr. Pratt saying is there's no adverse impacts, is if somehow somebody can make the case to Mr. Pratt, hey, there's going to be an adverse impact, that Mr. Pratt wouldn't be able to grant the waiver from the well moratorium. So that burden would be on somebody to prove that that was in fact the case.
Well, and then first of all, wouldn't DWR be the first one? I mean, I'm just trying to understand who makes the call first? And then what, is that a judgment call? Is it today, I feel that, you know, we're at a crisis, tomorrow, well, it rained and we're okay? You know, to make it fair and even for constituents, to make sure that the definition is exact and factual?
I look forward to DWR making that call from this request on the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency. Whether we do this ordinance or not, our current, whether we make this change today or not, has nothing to do with whether Mr. Pratt, with our original well moratorium, Mr. Pratt was allowed to give people exceptions unless somebody was able to make the case that it would have an adverse, significant adverse impact. I believe I'm saying that correctly, County Council, right? So it's, it is not, I mean, that has, that's not about this. This is about whether we're going to wait for DWR to say, the request of the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency is an appropriate request because it doesn't have significant adverse impact. They make that finding, the well moratorium's gone. If they don't make that finding, then the well moratorium stays in place until there, an appropriate plan that is developed, that's out there. So there, I just would point out, there's, that's why it's a separate.
I understand. Comment would be on section 1D, changing the A to we. I'm still concerned on section 2 of A versus F and the conflicting arguments as to the water well permits, repair, modification, replacement. And I'm not, not sold that this is such an urgency that we can't wait for the public to hear with the holidays and everything that is going on. I understand, as you pointed out, that they are trying to get in their alternative plan by December 31st with everything as well. So I don't, I don't know what happened, but I want to make sure that our constituents have the time and the opportunity, if this is going to be locking them into something that we give them that opportunity.
And thank you for your concerns, you know. One question, this does not have to go to Lafco, right?
No, it does not.
And also the city of Ojai supporting this. Supervisor?
The city of Ojai took unanimous vote to not submit this request to exempt themselves from the plan. The city of Ojai has The city of Ojai hasn't taken a position. They do about this, they did, they, quite frankly, most of the city council members said they were happy we did this, but they did not take an official vote on this one or the other. I don't want to misrepresent that.
So what's your pleasure?
Let me tell you this. First of all, we're dealing with people that have wells, and people that have wells have different needs than people in cities. I mean, I'm seeing this in my own district, Supervisor Parks is seeing this kind of well moratorium situation in her district, she's water district, which is destroying people's livelihoods. I mean, literally destroying, as, as, you know, Michaela and Jeff sat in a meeting with us, we talk about, this has unintended consequences. And when you talk about these people who live out there, it's kind of like somebody going up to you and saying, well, it costs you $800 a month to feed your big family. Well, now all of a sudden, your rates are going to be three or 4,000. How do I, what do I deal with this? When you say to me, you know, there's well moratorium, this and that, you know, these things have major impacts. And so when you go down that path, this is, this is destroying the opportunity. It's funny, listening to the people that we heard the other day, you say, you know what, SORGA voted in, great, the people said that, that's wonderful. Now, now because of these moratoriums, you're taking away our ability to perform SORGA, which is keep ag open, keep ag moving, keep the water flowing. In areas, especially this in Ojai, where the management group that's been up there forever has said there's not a major problem. And we also heard last time, we heard, this is one of the fastest recharging aquifers in the area. We've gotten rain, all that stuff. We're not adding any major things to destroy what's there. Now, if it's going to take three months, four months, for the time people get wells, if they do, that's not going to be there. There's going to be the opportunity before we go do this and go down this path. I mean, I saw, you know, I'm sure Michaela and Jeff will tell you, we saw fear in the eyes of a lot of these people of what happened when we're doing this, the unintended consequences of taking away people's rights and do it. I mean, and this is it. And people in the city don't understand that. They don't live that. They don't see that. I wish they, in this last meeting, they could have seen what was going on, trying to figure out, where do I get my water? What do I do? How do I, how do I support my family with this kind of stuff? So I know there's a lot of technical side of this, but I'm just telling you, we haven't had a problem there. We have, we heard before, and everybody agreed, it's a very fast charging aquifer. We're not in a crisis situation, so I don't see we have to go down this path. I mean, Supervisor Parks and I are going to be dealing with that. She goes out through Somus and those areas and all those different places. This kind of stuff continues and as it spreads, this mandate that, no, we're not going to have wells, no, we're not going to touch water. I mean, this is a crisis issue for this county, and we have decided, more of the people have decided that we are going to keep ag the way it is, and we're going to do that, we've got to support them. We can't go down this path possibly for one month, or two months, or three months, or six months, because we say we don't like something. You know, 90% of the people, I guarantee you, that city council didn't understand half the stuff you understand, Supervisor Bennett, about water. They just don't. It's very complicated. But at the same time, those people that are drawing water, they would have been going, hold on, we've got too much, don't, you know, the local people, don't draw out of my, my area while I'm drawing wells, because it could affect my, my, my own ability to provide for my family and keep my place going. I just don't see that. And this emergency stuff we do has really put a damper, really, unbelievable damper. It just came so much alive last, last week when we saw that. It was, it was amazing to me. So there's no way, I continue to even think about supporting this. We are putting people's livelihoods at risk, and we're putting exactly what, I don't know what it was, 55 or 60% of the people who voted for SORGA said, we want to keep open space, want to keep farming lively and going and moving. We're taking that away by these kind of things that are happening. There, the big wells, the big things that would have major impacts on aquifers have already been drilled and already out there. The guys that are saying, I need a little well here, I need a little, they're not going to have these major impacts. And so this moratorium is killing us. Again, going back to Supervisor Parks' district, where she's got Somus and all those areas, those people are going to be struggling. And my district's struggling, but you're going to do this to people in Ojai. It really puts a damper on what they're doing. They can't do a lot. So I don't, I just think this is, is over the top again.
I think it's, I think it's really important, excuse me if I could say, I think it's really important to point out that this, I think the strongest support for well moratoriums in Ventura County come from the ag producers that are, have wells. That's why Fox Canyon has.
And they did that there, they aren't doing it in these other places. That's all I'm saying.
That's why Fox Canyon has that. And the, you know, if you, you talk about Somus, I mean, people, I met with Craig Underwood and those other people, they didn't want new wells coming in, particularly while all of this is in a, in a state of flux. The argument was made that there wouldn't be a rush on wells. The argument was made when we, when we presented this, and yet we had 37 new well applications come in in less than 48 hours when we introduced this concept before. You can, if you don't make it clear what the rules are, you can get these kinds of rushes. But the point I, you know, when you say, hey, I see people out there and they, they have fear in their eyes, the fear in the eyes I see are the people that have existing wells in the Ojai Valley that are saying, my wells are running dry sooner and sooner because other people keep surrounding me with new wells going in. Now, that's something that you have to get a handle on, and I would offer to you, that's what is a concern of general purpose governments more than it is of the, of the basin at this point in time. So I know this is, this is one of those, I just think this is one of those times when we may have to agree to disagree, and I think we need to, need to come down and see if there are three people that, that support this second read of this. But my read is that people in the Ojai Valley support this, and that it is essential for us to let them know what the rules are as we move forward. And as the state, DWR, if, if in fact, the Ojai Basin is correct, the state is going to, after a 60-day review period, the state's going to be able to say yes or no, whether they accept a plan. If they accept a plan, this is all mute, the well moratorium is over with. If they don't, if they don't, then we're going to be happy that we have this in, this provision in here as we move forward.
Right, and clarify is to make sure that people know, is right now, they're, they are giving 60 days to provide feedback on the alternate plan, and they can give that feedback, that this basin can give feedback, the constituents there, correct?
Right.
Okay. And then they'll review it, and it's another 90 days. So our urgency ordinance that we have covers that too, correct?
And expires at that point in time.
When it is approved or unapproved?
Even if it's not approved, it expires at that 90-day period. That's what's not appropriate.
Okay, so then there's time.
It could expire.
That's what I'm saying.
And when we pass it, we said, if information shows up that lets us realize that we shouldn't have it expire at that 90 days, and I would offer to you, that evidence has come up as a result of.
The problem is, you know, the state will take years to do this. You know that'll do it, and it'll defect every, it just has such a major effect on this stuff, so.
You know, I think the important thing here is that, I understand Supervisor Foy's concern, and I've had, and the Division from Moore Park talked to me about that too. However, I believe, my understanding, this amendment's not going to affect other agencies. Is that correct? Or there?
It should only impact Ojai because of the circumstances. This exception that is part of this amendment will only impact Ojai.
Okay, so was that in mind?
That's because of the timing of when they submit their alternative plan, is that correct? So they're the only ones that are submitting alternative plan enough time?
That's correct.
That's right.
And the deadline is now passed to submit to plans?
It's now passed, so no other basin can take this approach. So Ojai is the only one that took the approach of the alternative plan, and this amendment only deals with alternative plans.
And as I understand, what the amendment does is instead of it being a threshold of when it is submitted, it's actually changed the threshold to when it is approved. This is something that we did approve at our previous Board of Supervisors meeting.
So what's the pleasure of the board?
And that is because they didn't do a plan before it was submitted, if they actually did a plan that was going to be vetted and all kinds of public input, but they didn't do that, so that's.
Yeah, but I think it was planned, what they did, some people just didn't like what they did, that's all.
So it, I think when we wrote it, we were rather lenient in saying, all you have to do is submit a plan. It could have been a junk plan, and it didn't matter, because they quote submitted it. But here, I think it makes more sense that it actually has to be approved by the Department of Water Resources.
Which is reasonable, but you can't stop everything, because what if, what if the state takes two years, a year, a year and a half, three, what if it takes that long? What do these people do? You can't do that to these people. That's, I mean, and we're not in a position, if we end up with this rain and this thing keeps flowing, and whatever, let's just say that does, that, and if it doesn't, there's not a reason.
I would offer there are two other, two other things that can happen. The basin could decide to do a plan, and that would end when they actually did a plan that was publicly vetted, which.
Yeah, but it has to be approved, then if somebody didn't like it.
So they could do a plan, or, and we say in there, our watershed protection district could come back to us and recommend that there's no need for, for this, you know, for us to make a change. We can make a change if the state's taking two or three years, and somebody can do that.
And again, if we do hear something after they've had their meeting, though they've had an opportunity to discuss this already, they can bring that forward, they can review this again if that is the case. But I, I will defer to the supervisor for the district and to the city council in that district.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion, Brian?
I think you've seen in your own district, if this is going to be a major, is these kind of things a major impact on yours?
This only applies to Ojai.
But this is only to Ojai, yeah?
Take it from what's happened in your own areas, like we have, you know, doing this kind of stuff.
However, it does only apply to Ojai.
Okay. Okay, and that's approved. And our next item is, item 34 is a second public hearing regarding adoption of ordinance and repealing and re-acting Chapter 7, Division 6 of the Ventura County Ordinance Code pertaining to the regulation of smoking in unincorporated areas of the county campus. And Regal?
Good morning, Chair Saragosa.
Good morning.
Chair Long and members of the board, Mr. Powers, Happy New Year to all. So yes, this item is to hold the second hearing of the proposed comprehensive tobacco regulation smoking ordinance, and the first hearing, as you recall, was held on the 6th and the 13th of last month. And this would be then to hold the, open the second hearing and have discussion and hopefully adopt.
Thank you, Regal. Any questions from staff, from the board, excuse me? Okay, I have one, I'm going to open the public hearing, I have one speaker, and it's Primo Castro. Okay, Primo, you have five minutes for you.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the board, residents of Ventura County, my name is Primo Castro, Government Relations Director for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, sister organization of the American Cancer Society, here in strong support of this much, much needed Ventura County ordinance. Please, I'm not going to bore you today with any factoids or any of that, but please, it's about time. We want to make sure that we show the rest of California that we're doing great things in Ventura County, and obviously with your support of the second reading, passing of the second reading, you know, we're going to be getting there. So thank you very much to you all, and congratulations. Happy New Year, by the way. Have a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. I don't have any additional comments, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And any additional questions by the board?
Yeah, I'm going to oppose it as I have previously, I just find it inherently unfair allowing them to smoke cigarettes on the golf course, or cigars, which you usually see more often of, but in particular, also denying the ability of people who are addicted to nicotine and are mentally ill and have to be confined, that they will no longer be able to have the opportunity to smoke as they have for that short period of time when they're in our inpatient psychiatric unit, which is usually less than a week. It's not a time when someone's going to be able to quit cigarettes, and I think it just adds undue hardship to a very difficult situation.
Okay, thank you.
Can I say one thing about it? I understand that in the past September, the government, Governor Brown vetoed SB 1333, the bill that should have banned smoking in the California state parks and beaches. Are we still, so in here, we're stating that you can't smoke at our, our campgrounds and so forth.
That's right.
Do we fix, I didn't.
We, what do we have, Regal, the golf courses, and also the, go ahead and give us the exemption.
So there's, there's the ability for Mr. Powers as Chief Executive Officer, and myself as Public Health Director, to take into consideration requests for exemptions, but for right now, in terms of the only recreational area that is, is called out as an exemption, is the, in the area of recreational areas, is the golf courses.
Right, so it wasn't called out. The, the campgrounds were not called out, even though we have campfires and everything.
And of course, then Regal or the CEO can, you know, come up with the exemption.
Perfect. Can we, can I have somebody from, we come, Ms. Bandak, you come down to Parks, let's talk about that, because that is an issue.
I'm trying not to say too much in my first meeting, but it's hard.
That's right.
Apologize.
So I guess part of the question that was asked, I'm just, I know that we've, there's been authority given that you can come and say, look, we need this, I need that. What is your thoughts on that now? Just if you can talk about that.
They, our position on the parks, for the regional parks specifically, not local parks, but the regional parks, is one, it will be very difficult for staff or, and/or our hosts to enforce. What we brought out Supervisor Long is we have campfires in very close proximity between rigs that are, are also burning. We don't know what kind of impact we're going to have. You know, the governor made his decision, saying the current written version they had was too broad and too punitive, and wanted it relooked at. And even in that SB bill, they had a provision put in there to allow state parks to set up designated smoking areas within that bill, and he still didn't approve it. But that's, we don't know what kind of impact it would have on us, but with state parks not having the rule, we can see some of our business going to state parks.
Okay. I appreciate that. The reason why, and you led us into there, is how do we reinforce this, right?
It is going to be almost impossible for us to do it on a daily basis, and the sheriff is unfortunately going to get a lot of phone calls he doesn't want.
Which, and I've talked to him, there's, there are no way he can enforce it, it's just not going to be. But I guess I'm trying to figure out, part of my, my thing was, a lot of your parks are by the beach.
We are major income revenue generators.
And so it's going to drive people down on the beach, but there was this, we tried to make sure.
It will drive them to the beach, which goes to a point that Supervisor Bennett made, picking up cigarettes during beach cleanup out on the beach. The beach that fronts the three parks we have down there is a state beach, not a county beach. So there would not be a moratorium restriction on that beach, so if we did push all the campers down, that's where they would end up, was, it would be on the beach.
Exactly. And I, and the reason I supported this last time was that because there was this ability for you to figure out how to do that, and I just want to make sure that I'm, if I go forward with another support, that you're comfortable with doing this, because I do agree, you're going to end up, all these people on the beach, people are going to complain that I'll smoke on the beach. We're trying to balance this whole deal. I mean, do you see a way to do that? I mean, I don't want to put all the pressure on you saying, okay, you guys said it, but I don't even, can't see it, you've had a couple weeks to think about this.
It's going to be very difficult for us to manage and enforce camping areas, especially when you've got, you know, people living within arms' reach of each other. Somebody smokes, and we do self-policing, as the health department says it's intended to do, they tell you, please, you can't smoke in this park anymore, so they go under their trailer and smoke, which is technically also illegal, because they're still on county property. So we, it's kind of like a vouch chasing our tail within, within the park to do that, and it's going to be a real burden on the hosts, and when my staff aren't there patrolling, because we get a lot of heat as it is, they're not there often enough, that they get people that don't want to comply.
But people are supposed to comply with the law, whether it's the same thing as drinking, you're necessarily drinking, and people still drink and so forth, so.
True.
I think, you know, and I think the benefit here is that Regal and the CEO and you have the ability to, to exempt a lot of those, of those, of those places too.
If, if I, if I could weigh in, Supervisor Foy, I know, we made, I think the significant change that we made last time was, we said, private property owners, we're going to be able to do the same thing that the county was, which is have an exception process.
And that's, I'm just trying to make sure that we do this.
And the issue that was raised with regards to parks, and, and the other communities that have done this, and, you know, in the city of Camarillo, et cetera, they've done this in their parks, it, it just hasn't become an issue. And if it becomes an issue, I think we have a very good safeguard here in terms of, you know, we, quite frankly, the only reason golf courses are exempted is because you made the request. They made the request, and it was, they, they made the case. We just need to try this and see if it's, you know, it, it may very likely not be a problem. You may find that, that, you know, nobody, you, like you said, you're not going to be out there enforcing it, the sheriff's not going to be out there enforcing it, it may have de minimis or no impact on whether people are camping at the state beaches or at the county beaches. On the other hand, it may have an impact, and then we, we have built in a mechanism for three people that we think are responsible to be able to work that out if that, if that mechanism shows up.
Well, that's a good important part. What is the financial impact to us as a county in putting this ordinance in? Are we, you know, and like you said, so there isn't one, because we're not going to be hiring new officers and so forth to follow up on this ordinance. We are hoping the constituents will follow that goodwill. Is that what you're saying?
And I think some of the things that were mentioned initially by health also is, hopefully the, the, I know this is probably. And I think some of the things that were mentioned initially by health also is, hopefully the, I know this is probably not gonna help much, but it will. The less people smoke, the less we're gonna have people in the hospitals and ERs and so forth. And I think this is where the health department's coming from, too. That's another point.
And at the IPU, they're going to put patches on them.
I don't think the.
People with severe mental illness who are in a state of crisis, give them a patch.
So what do we have?
So do you wanna offer patches to people at the golf courses?
I don't think we, I don't think, Regal, no patches, at least nothing from the county.
I guess, I guess, at the end, you've gotta deal with this, and my thing is, I just would hope that you wouldn't allow it to get, because one of the things we didn't want was people going after each other.
That's right.
I told you, you couldn't smoke next to, and you know, that cup, and we didn't want that, and so we've kinda, it's just trying to give you that freedom. And I, the reason I brought you up, because I want you to, because you've had weeks now to think through that process before, it's kinda, okay, we're doing this, and what is gonna be the real impact? And Sue has been brought up, there is some, no question, there's in the idea that there's some local cities that have done it in their parks. A lot of those cities don't have people spending their night and sleeping there and doing that kinda stuff.
And that's really why.
That's the biggest deal.
We separate the language of the local parks that are, the five local parks we have.
From the region.
And cities are local parks. People can walk home, they can walk out onto the sidewalk. When you're at a regional park, it's a destination point. You drove there to do something either all day or for multiple days, and you don't plan on going back home to get your nicotine relief, you're gonna have to physically leave the property to go somewhere else to do it. And local parks are structured a little bit different, that's why we, when we originally made the suggestions, we separate those two very distinctly, because there's really no way we can, the local parks we already have, if there's a ball field in there, there's already a new law, state law, that's got a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot radius around any youth activities. So two of our local parks are immediately shut down as soon as you show up to do anything, too smoking. So, it makes sense from that aspect, the local parks would have a full restriction.
So what's the pleasure of the board here, in motion?
I think we approved this before, I would just ask, Ms. Van Dyke, if you would maybe not have any hesitance ever come back here and say, I'd like to put something on here and do a, talk about that, because we've heard it from everybody here, if there's a problem, let's fix it, but at least we try it.
But come back here after he's spoken to the CEO.
Yeah, yeah, and they may say, look, we tried something, it didn't work, but I don't want it to go, a year from now, you're going, man, our, we're diving, our revenues are diving, it's tough on the parks, we're just making lives miserable for these people, it's just not working, and you come here and, because I think the board wants to try it, is where I think the way you can say it.
Thank you, Van Dyke.
And then also, Supervisor Parks, that, what the department that you're concerned about can, can be okayed by the department. Is that correct?
Well.
The department came before us adamantly supporting prohibiting patients from wearing or from smoking, so.
Right, I was here for that, and I understand there's a study where the patches did work, and there's, there are others that say that it doesn't work at the mental health. And I think that everyone's treatment is different, not, it doesn't work for everybody. So, just to make sure if they need to be able to have an area, that they would be able to come to the CEO or so forth and be able to get that.
Yeah, you know, this has been a longstanding issue in why we, as I understand it, haven't moved forward on requiring a smoke-free campuses, specifically because of the IPU. This is where they already have an area where patients in crisis, psychiatric crisis can go. And so this is a new policy that would actually apply to it, and that is why I can't support it. You know, it's not every day that you have people who are basically recovered or recovering from mental illness come before the board and really strongly request that we don't do this. And I have a lot of appreciation for what they've been through, and so I just think it's a matter of respect and compassion, and I won't support something that prevents them, even though it's not healthy, but we're only talking about people confined against their will for a short, a short period of time.
Thank you, Supervisor. Let's vote on this.
I'm still gonna support this, but I do understand where Supervisor Parks comes in, and I hope that if it becomes a problem, I don't wanna be the one from this board telling medical people how to practice medicine, but.
That's a major concern.
It becomes a problem not for them, but for the patients. And so they're not the ones, other than what we've had, come before us already, and they're not going to be coming here. So this isn't listening to the patients, and I understand we wanna hear the medical advice, and we know that cancer kills people, and it causes cancer, and, I mean, cigarettes kill people, but this is a situation that, as I say, I can't say it any other way. It's a matter of compassion for the people who are being confined against their will and would receive relief from being able to have a cigarette, which they currently can do.
Yeah, thank you for your concerns, and we appreciate that. Okay, so that's approved, four to one. Okay, our next item is approval of the proposed twenty-seventeen Ventura County state and federal legislative agendas and platforms. Sue?
Oh, Sue loves this opportunity. It's my favorite day. Good morning, Chair Zaragoza, members of the board. Mr. Powers, for the record, Sue Hughes, with the county CEO's office, as I do every year. I'm before you with this year's proposed state and federal legislative agenda and platform. And as you all know, I meet with county department heads and their staff in the fall of each year in order to develop this, have conversations with staff in our office, as well as nice conversations with your staff as well. So this is the culmination of all of those meetings. I wanna really thank your staff and department heads and their staff for helping me to develop this again this year. This year, just from my perspective, having been, having done this for now nearly twenty years, I don't, nothing jumped out at me. There is no request for state legislation introduction this year, which is a little different for us. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Attachment A is the state legislative agenda and platform, B is the federal, and then C is the document that your board asked for a number of years ago that is a compilation of A and B together, intract changes that shows things that were taken off and things that were added. For the most part, the things that were removed were things that are either no longer pertinent or things that have become law. So, and then D, of course, is our accomplishments document that tells you what we've done with the help of our advocates in both Washington DC and in Sacramento, so.
So there's minimal changes.
Minimal changes this year.
And some delicious items that were no longer relevant. Any questions of Sue?
Yes, since we met, a new one has been added. Seeing the wording, it states that the county supports legislation that allows for an alternative means to provide full information to voters on a proposed transportation tax that reflects modern communication tools. Is there not, is there a reason we can't just say on any kind of measure, why should we just use modern communication tools on transportation taxes? So that's my suggestion, is not limited just to transportation tax.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Sounds good to me if the board is amenable to that, okay, and then.
Any concerns from the board on those changes?
Also, just as I have in the past, there are two items here that I don't support, and would just ask that they be called out, otherwise I would, you know, approve the rest of the platform. And the items specifically are the two-thirds vote on transportation and the fees on flood control, which the county's requesting be exempt from Prop two-eighteen, so those are the two that I would ask that my vote reflect a no vote on those, but otherwise support for the rest.
Okay, is that a motion?
Sure.
So we have a, we have a motion with the two changes. And also the wording, Supervisor?
I just, you know, every year, you know, I can't support any of this, so I just will, I'm gonna stay with a hundred percent, I'm not gonna. There's just so many things over the top in here that I just can't go along with, so instead of voting, instead of breaking it up, I'm just gonna vote no.
So then we have the two changes there, and then the wording now.
There's just so many.
I wanna be clear, so Supervisor Parks is pulling two items, and they'll have to have a separate vote?
No, what I was suggesting is I'm moving the item, with it being noted in the minutes that those two items I'm opposed to.
She's not gonna support.
Wait a minute, we have those options? I'm sorry, still new to this. We've looked as our team as to making sure that our district is covered within this. I agree there are items in here that I personally do not agree with, didn't know that I could call those out as no's. So I will be voting on this for our district, but please note that I do not agree on every one of these items that are in here. Shoot, you want pressure pulling me out right now. I do agree, no for the tax. There's a fifty-five percent vote here, I don't agree on that. I do not agree on the fact that, well, there's just too many here that I can't.
And I, you know, and I think the fifty-five percent is really important. You can see VCTC, we just lost an opportunity to raise some money because of that. That's gonna affect us, you know, we're now, the county of Santa Barbara and county of Ventura are gonna be taking our taxes to do their freeways and so forth, and we're left, you know, supporting those folks, too, so, I mean, that's important, that fifty-five percent. That just happened with VCTC. But anyway, so we have a motion here. I'll go ahead and make a motion.
I just wonder how that works, but it is what it is. I guess if I'm opposed to a couple of the measures, the other two supervisor voting against the whole packet, then those two measures are essentially removed? No?
No.
No, I think you have to vote on the whole packet, or you can break it out and vote on each item if you want. I think it's proper to note in the minutes that you don't agree with everything, or you don't agree with specified provisions, but you're still voting on the entire packet, and you're just noting, asking the clerk to note in the minutes.
To note it.
What if three people, excuse me, what if three people note in the minutes that they all object to one of the provisions?
Well, I, I don't, the word "object" is the thing that I focus on. They might object to it philosophically, but not enough to vote against it. I mean, so the note is they're voting, you know, they're clearly voting for submitting the legislative agenda.
Change the motion.
Leave it to me to open up a can of worms. Apologize already. But yes, as I look this, I mean, these are years and years of compilation of what you're coming through. So when I vote as a yes, hell yes, I want legislation to be fighting for our county, and I want our state to be fighting for our county. Do I agree on all these? No.
Okay, so that's understood, then, according to the, okay, so.
Brian can note that in the minutes.
Okay, clerk?
And the vote, there's only, there's two substantive changes to what's before the board, did you catch those, Brian?
It's only one change and.
And two oppositions.
Well, one change to actually support the legislation about modern communication tools.
Correct. And then just Supervisor Parks and Supervisor Long.
Two concerns.
In the minutes that they are opposed to, two-thirds vote on the transportation pass, and Supervisor Parks opposed to fees on flood control being exempt from Proposition two-eighteen.
I think, however, that the, probably the way to go about this is to have a motion without those two items in it, and then we can support that, so I would ask for.
Because I think then Leroy said that we can vote it, just making that, those comments?
One makes it effective, one doesn't, so. I would be in favor of making it effective, so I would ask that we approve the platform without those two items on the tax, the Prop two-eighteen one and the fifty-five percent one.
Mr. Chair, you could do it either way, you can have a motion if Supervisor Parks framed it, if there's a second, you could vote on that, and then those two items would be removed from our legislative agenda packet. And if that doesn't succeed, then you can vote on the alternative, which is to pass it as it is, noting in the minutes, and of course it will reflect then she also had moved to exclude those. But you, you can proceed either way.
So I'll go ahead and move that one amended item on the communication to voters, and then also ask that we remove both the Prop two-eighteen one and the two-thirds majority request to go to fifty-five percent from the legislative platform.
Because we're gonna vote on those then afterwards separately.
Yes, that works.
Always.
Okay, I, I don't see a second in that.
Okay, there's no sec.
So that fails, okay, so now we go to the recommendation by Leroy.
It's like playing chess?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll go back to.
I will second hers, I apologize. I was looking in here to see if there was anything else that was carved, my apologies, but I would second Linda's statement.
Make your motion again.
So back to that original motion.
So what is your motion?
It was to make that change regarding how voters are communicated to. And the second one is regarding Prop two-eighteen, the request from Public Works is to exempt that from a vote of the people if it's a flood control project. And the other item is, instead of going to fifty-five percent for a transportation tax, that it remain at two-thirds.
They're pulling it out.
I'm pulling those two.
Making one change and pulling two items to be voted separately.
That's right. Okay, so that's approved, now we go back to the.
Now, I'll make the motion to include the two items that Supervisor Parks pulled out, okay?
That's right.
That is the, that is the, go from the two-thirds, go, what Sue has in there, so to include what Sue has in there that Supervisor Parks objected to on Prop two-eighteen and on the two-thirds vote.
Two-thirds.
Well, I didn't vote to take it out, she, she made a motion to, do we approve these other things?
That's right.
And so, yeah, I approve all those things, and then it was just so that she would have the opportunity to vote no on those two, but not have to vote against everything. Well, we could have just made the motion, you know, for everything, and it's kind of a courtesy to pull things out so that people can do that, so.
So now the motion is?
The motion is to approve, well, I'll make them separate, the motion is to approve the two-eighteen language that Ms. Hughes has included in the language.
That is to exempt it from a Prop two-eighteen vote if it's a flood control.
If it's a flood control project, right. All right, and now.
Okay, that's failed.
Now I'll make the motion to include the, the language that Sue has about the transportation.
No, that was the, that was the other one.
To change it to fifty-five percent instead of two-thirds, to sixty-six percent.
Okay, that's failed. And now for the total.
Okay, so they're both out.
Yeah.
And the transportation language that Supervisor Parks requested at the very beginning, I'm going to amend that language.
Right, regarding the communication to voters, so it's on any measure, we should have good communication to voters using advanced technologies and all.
So now we need a motion for the remaining?
No, I think we're there.
We did everything that should.
Yeah.
Okay, all righty.
That was the first vote, that was a four-one.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Sue. Okay, our next item is item thirty-five, no, that's it. Okay, thirty-six, and this is a public hearing regarding adoption of amendment twenty-fourteen eighteen, M O A, revising the assignment bonus revisions with the Ventura County Deputy Sheriff's Association in the CEO's office.
Good afternoon, board members, Chair Zaragoza, Mr. Powers. My name is Craig Liedem with the Labor Relations Division of the CEO's Office. The item before you is a request to commence a public hearing regarding an amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the county and the Ventura County Deputy Sheriff's Association, specifically regarding an increase to the assignment bonus for traffic investigators. It's also a request that you schedule a second hearing for January twenty-fourth and adopt the amendment at the close of that hearing. County sheriff investigator's duties are quite complex and extensive, they require specialized training, skills, experience, not the least of which being the ability to plot, to apply the laws of physics in motion in the course of developing analysis and conclusions regarding traffic incidents and fatalities and so forth. Traffic investigators also called often to testify in court about such investigations, and oftentimes those do involve fatalities. The sheriff's office believes it's most effective when we can recruit and particularly retain traffic investigators over an extended period of time. This increase is an increase from a. This increase is an increase from an assignment bonus of 5% to 7.5%. It would affect two positions in the sheriff's office, and it would basically approximate the difference between the 80-hour bi-weekly shift that a traffic investigator works and the 84-hour shift that is available in a patrol or a custody division, which is an alternative in assignment for those traffic investigators. So it would essentially match the pay there. This increased bonus, again, impacts only two positions within the sheriff's office, and it's supported both by the sheriff's office and by the association as well, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you. I don't have any, just, just a, just quick comment.
So the idea was, if I was to take this position out of my regular position, to move over there, I'd, I'd be taking a pay cut basically to do that, because I'm losing four hours.
Right.
And so really, all we're trying to do is make sure that that officer who's willing to do this and become specialized in this gets paid equal to everybody else and then do that, because there's a, even though I'm working maybe a little bit hours different or whatever, but it's just, that's what happens. So there really was no incentive for anybody to take that job that we needed done.
Essentially, yes.
Okay, well, good. I appreciate you guys willing to work that out, so that's good.
Any other board questions? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. There's, I don't have any cards, so I'm going to close the public hearing. And any additional concerns from supervisors? So we need a motion to, so we have a motion. Please vote. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, item 37 is a second public hearing regarding adoption of 2016-19 M O A for the proposed salary benefits increase for Local 721 of the Service Employees International Union. Jim?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers. My name is Jim Dimbowski, I'm with Human Resources and Labor Relations. I'm here today to recommend that you conduct a second public hearing on the terms of a recommended three-year memorandum of agreement between this county and Local 721 of the Service Employees International Union, and at the conclusion of that hearing, that you adopt the recommended memorandum of agreement. The previous M O A between the parties expired on August 9th of last year. Prior to actually engaging in the bargaining process, county representatives analyzed a variety of economic and reports and forecasts to determine what might be the general trend over the next two to three years with respect to wages. We also looked at healthcare forecasts in great detail and contrasted those with the known experience here in Ventura County. And finally, as been done in other times in our past, we conducted an in-depth total comp survey that compared our benchmark classes with those of other entities, and to see how our employees stood up relatively to those others. Based on the foregoing, it was thought that cost of living would be moderately increasing in the next three years, that health costs were going to substantively increase, and that a good portion of the SEIU represented employees would still be more than 5% behind the market in terms of total compensation. Given those, given all that, it was thought that a three-year M O A with modest would represent G S I's general salary increases of 1.5% in each year. A more substantive $50 per pay period increase in medical flex benefits was warranted, and also to further benefit, to better position the county with respect to recruitment and retention of targeted employees. Modest but capta increases were directed towards those classes that would still remain behind market. Those three moves, modest G S I's, more substantive flex increases and targeted MBAs form the core of the proposed agreement. There are other adjustments in the proposed of M O A that are of lesser general impact. Those are summarized in the letter before you and are specifically detailed in the red line version of the M O A, which is attached as Exhibit 1. Pleased to inform you that SEIU forcefully recommended this deal to its membership, and that it was ratified on this 22nd of December. The Civil Service Commission has been fully apprised of the proposed changes of the agreement, and has indicated that there had, that it has no issues with respect to those changes. Finally, if I may, your board in this county were well-served by the efforts of Craig Liedem, Mike Kurnow, Jeremy Siders, and Yvonne Martinez at the bargaining table, and other members of the Human Resources staff who assisted on various occasions. Particularly, it comes to mind is Kelly Akers, who we drive nuts with requests for payroll-based reports, and Marjorie Deal, who helped us with the surveys. Of particular note, not just because he's my boss, but because of great impact at the table, Sean Otten joined us in the last two meetings and forcefully moved the agenda. And also, prior to bargaining, he and Tracy Sewell of our benefit staff did a great thing and removed a lot of the potential angst at the bargaining table by coming in with alternative health, health insurance plans. And of course, the guidance we received from the Smith Brothers and County Council Leroy and Matt, and the staff of the Audit Controller and Jeff himself was deeply appreciated. And as always, your ongoing guidance and leadership of your board, the CEO, and Assistant CEOs Carol and Rodriguez are deeply appreciated. Pardon me? Not every, not, I think I got everyone. Respect, because it is truly a group effort. Respectfully, the proposed increases are thought to be a prudent win-win course of action for the county, its employees, Local 721, and the people it represents. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you to the staff and Otten and CEO's office. And board members, any questions? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing, public hearing, and I have three speakers for three minutes each, starting with Danny Carrillo, and then followed by Bruce Goldenson, and then Jordan Roberts. So Danny Carrillo first.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Chairman Zaragosa, CEO Powers, county staff. My name is Danny Carrillo, and I am the Tri-County's Regional Director for SEIU Local 721. First of all, welcome Supervisor Long.
Thank you.
Also, it was encouraging to hear in the public comment section, the comments Supervisor Bennett made about addressing the need for affordable housing and workforce housing. Also Supervisor Foy pointing out that, you know, there is teamwork here amongst the county staff and our members, which is what it takes, and we appreciate that. The theme of our message today is exactly that. It's teamwork and collaboration. SEIU, as you heard, 721 county members voted overwhelmingly to ratify the tentative agreement during your winter break, because it is key, is it a key step to protecting and strengthening Ventura County Public Services? We look forward to the board's yes vote on this agreement. Second yes vote. In addition to the agreement before you today, we advocated for a set of six proposals that are meant to lift up all of Ventura County. These common good proposals were rejected by county negotiators. We believe that these proposals that are vital to the health and safety of our community. I would like to pause it for a second, because I too would like to acknowledge your team, CEO Powers, members of the negotiating team for the county, led by Mr. Otten and Mr. Dimbowski, Mark Kurnow, Jeremy Siders, and Yvonne. Although we were, we got a lot of no's in our ask, we were able to come together and move things forward and get to this resolution, this tentative agreement. We encourage the county to work with us. We will continue to work with our community allies, many that you have worked with before, groups from across the county. We hope everyone will take an active role in helping to lift up Ventura County through these six common good proposals. First, we must ensure that we have adequate translation services for all residents, so that they can have equal access to services. The county needs to hire and train sufficient workers fluent in non-English languages such as Spanish, Tagalog, and Misteco, among others. Second, it's critical that we continue to advocate for access to quality and timely healthcare services by budgeting properly to expand care to employees and additional residents who are now receiving care throughout the Ventura County Healthcare Agency. Third, we must support affordable housing and workforce housing, so that you and current workers have a place to live and grow with their families. Fourth, we must work to make Ventura County a safe county for all residents, where services are provided to the most vulnerable without fear of retaliation or discrimination. Fifth, we also need protections against wage theft in our community. Ventura County is considered one of the wage theft capitals in America, with the workforce comprised of many undocumented and low-wage workers. In Ventura County, one in three low-wage workers do not earn the minimum wage due to wage theft. I'm almost done. Fifth, sixth, and finally, we must support environmental protections and investment in our community. This will help Ventura County create new jobs while still preserving its limited environmental resources and conserving Ventura County's internationally renowned natural beauty. We are fortunate to live in a county that is beautiful, rich in natural resources, and full of vibrant cultures and robust industries. We must make sure that all residents have access to vital services, so that all families can grow and thrive here for generations to come. This is the essence of lifting up Ventura County. Once again, we hope that the county will join us and community groups in helping to make these critical efforts a reality in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny, and thank you for working with our staff, and thank all the employees for, for your excellent work. Thank you so much for, for the work that you do. Our next speaker is Bruce.
Can I just comment on, I think you have a lot of laudable goals. Appreciate your work towards those. Not so sure you can define those into the contracts, you know, with the MOAs, but do appreciate the goals.
Thank you, Dan. Bruce Goldenson?
Good morning, Chairman Zaragosa.
Got three minutes.
Board members, CEO Powers, and county staff. My name is Bruce Goldenson, and I've worked for the county of Ventura since 2006. I joined the Human Services Agency in 2011, and I'm presently a Client Benefit Specialist III in Ventura. Serving my community and helping families thrive in Ventura County is one of the most rewarding parts of my job, and that is what drives me and keeps me going. Every worker at the Human Services Agency is constantly serving the most vulnerable in our community, and, and there are children at risk and families looking for, helping children at risk, and families are looking for vital services. We care about our clients, and we want them to be able to share in all the best that Ventura County has to offer, but there are steep barriers. The first has to do with the lack of affordable housing. It is impacting Ventura County hard. Many of your employees are also Ventura County residents, and we know Ventura, and we know Ventura County, its people, geography, history, and challenges. I say from firsthand experience, when you work for a human services agency, you know what kind, you know what kind of knowledge matters as far as serving these people. Living here means we do our jobs better. One of the most reporting, most, sorry, most rewarding parts of my job is serving Ventura County specifically by helping families thrive. This is what drives me and keeps me going, and I know it's true for so many of the people I work with at HSA. But more of us are no longer able to afford to live in Ventura County. This means our ability to work for the county is at risk. HSA workers serve some of the most vulnerable populations, from children at risk to families who need to connect to vital services. By not doing more to incentivize affordable housing construction, Ventura County is putting its workforce at risk. We should reverse this trend and build more affordable housing now. We're helping our clients find work, live productively, and raise the next generation of Ventura County residents. We ask that you help us create the conditions to meet these challenges. Our goal is to lift up Ventura County for all of us. At SEIU Local 721, we're determined to do it, and we hope you join us.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jordan Roberts. So Danny, now you're Jordan Roberts.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm not Jordan Roberts, but with your permission, I'd like to read his comments. He was with us, but he had to go meet his plumber for a personal matter, so.
Okay.
I'll try to be short here. Members of the board, CEO Powers, and county staff, oh, I'm sorry, first of all, Supervisor Parks, I do recognize your comments and acknowledge it, however, never say never, and I know we don't like to compare ourselves to the county, to the south of us. What we call these are common good proposals, and it's something that we can work on to, in fact, maybe include them into the contract at some point. My name is Jordan Roberts, and I am a resident of Ventura County. I have worked for Ventura County for 13 years. I'm currently at the fire department, working as a supervising public safety dispatcher. I am a proud member of Local 721. I am the current chair of the County Ventura Bargaining Team at our union. Local 721 proposed a series of common good proposals, and they were rejected at the bargaining table. We will continue to fight for these important proposals. I'll talk about two of the proposals. The first has to do with Ventura County's healthcare system. It's a hot topic in the news, and it's a hot topic among your employees. Ventura County's medical staff still faces a shortage of emergency room assistants and medical office assistants. These shortages force patients to either endure unacceptable long wait times or schedule appointments ridiculously long into the future. Nobody here would accept these kind of conditions. Yet our patients endure them, and so do your own employees. Might I remind you, the healthcare system I'm describing is the very system your own employees use. And our dollars keep it afloat, so it is not just a funding issue. It is also a management issue, which leads to my next point. My second suggestion has to do with keeping high-quality employees. This is directly tied to problems at our healthcare system. It is tough to keep high-quality people when they are constantly asked to do more with less. And what do we do? And what we do is provide life-saving healthcare to the community. While, when you value your community, you value your workforce, because your workforce provides those services to the community. Ventura County can do a better job of valuing both. For example, where I work in the fire department, we handle crisis and emergency situations. Starting in September of 2016, our Ventura County Fire Department started handling dispatch services for the Oxnard Fire Department. Since then, our transfer calls and the time we spend on the phone with translators has tripled. Ventura County's ethnic diversity continues to mirror the state of California. That means our need for Spanish-language services has grown. And Ventura County has its own unique population, a Misteco community. So far, Ventura County's solution to this challenge has been to contract out for translation services, but that's a risk we should not take if we want to run a top-quality emergency services system. We need loyal, dedicated employees to create a set of best practices. They need to share lessons learned and build an institutional memory. This kind of work culture translates into better community services, but this won't happen if we can't recruit and retain high-quality employees in the first place. There's little incentive to stay if your job forces you and your family members to wait in ridiculously long lines for a doctor's visit, and there's a little incentive to stay if it takes weeks just to see a doctor. One more page. If there's a little incentive to stay, then the vicious cycle of losing good employees and contracting out continues. Services to the community won't get better, they'll get worse. The members of SEIU Local 721 provide these services, and we want Ventura County to succeed. It is exactly why in our last bargaining session, we submitted the common good proposals on translations and our access to healthcare service proposals. Our union, SEIU Local 721, is ready for a challenging new year. We will fight for our members and our community allies, who are your residents too. Our goal is to lift up Ventura County for everybody. We hope, we hope you will join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Thank you for that, and again, I want to thank you know, the staff and you and, and all the employees, you know, for the excellent work and working with us.
Yes, thank you.
It's extremely important. And I don't have any additional speakers, so at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing.
I'd like to compliment both sides for recognizing the importance of timing in terms of moving forward, so that the employees didn't miss anything.
That's right.
And I know that took hard work on everybody's part, so thank you, Danny, and thank you to our staff also.
I was just going to echo what Supervisor Bennett said. Thank you to Sean and Jim and Danny and your team. This is a partnership. There's a lot of moving parts in this negotiation, very complex, important issues, and you came together for the employees, and appreciate how much you value the employees, and we share that, and so, so thank you for that.
Okay, any additional comments from the board? If not, what supplies are the board?
Move the recommended action.
Got a first and a second. Let's vote. Who, somebody needs to vote. Thank you, and that's been approved. Thank you, Jim, and thank you, Sean, and the rest of the folks. Okay, our next item is, we have an addendum here, is item 49, is a public hearing regarding adoption of 2017-20 memorandum of agreement for proposed salary benefit increases for the international unit operating engineers, Local 501. And is that Sean?
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Zaragosa, supervisors, Mr. Powers. My name is Sean Otten, I'm your Human Resources Director, and today I'm here before you to recommend the adoption of the memorandum of understanding agreement between IUOE Local 501 and the county. The term of the agreement is three years, 2017 through 2020. This is the first of two public hearings. The second public hearing is scheduled for the 24th of January. The second public hearing is scheduled for the 24th of January. The proposed MOA will become effective January 24th upon your approval. The main features of the MOA are 1.5% general salary increase for each January of the three-year contract, two market-based adjustments for 58 of the 187 members, ranging from 1% to 6%, those folks are the ones that were, after an extensive market review analysis, they looked to be undermarket and below the median, so we agreed to provide them market-based adjustments that essentially averaged .24% over the two-year period per year of the contract. So of the 3.4% in total, that was .24% of payroll. In recognition of the healthcare inflation and the general increases that we have had and anticipate to have over the longer period, we also have agreed to a $50 per pay period flexible credit allowance increase beginning each year of the contract. We have a one-time $100 payment as reflection that the contract is going, and now reflecting that the premium increases started on December 18th. Finally, we have a $50,000 term life insurance and accidental death and dismemberment insurance provision in the contract. Upon completion of a request for proposal process and approval by your board of a contractor, essentially, the terms of these life insurance provisions are the same as for that approved for the SEIU and is already in place for management. There's also a $0.20 increase for Level 3 bilingual pay for those people who are tasked with bilingual translation services as part of their jobs. There's some other provisions that have less significant financial impact within the contract. At this time, I'd like to bring your attention to essentially what's a five-minute overview of the process we go through, so bear with me while I go through four slides here. So the total compensation, when we negotiate with our union representatives, we undertake a significant process, and this is by way of background. So total compensation, we look at the total compensation of the unit. I think one of these just began working.
It's working.
We look at the total compensation of the members in the unit. Total compensation being every item of compensation for practical purposes and benefits, inclusive of health, retirement, during employment, and post-employment, as well as other provisions such as 401K and vacation accruals and so on. The stated goal of the board has been to stay within 95% of the median market pay for county employees, so that's the goal we usually work towards. Very importantly, we work hand-in-hand with our CFO and the finance folks to make sure that the proposals, and of course, the board, we take a great direction from the board, to make sure that our proposals are sustainable in the long term. So the county, the CFO performs five-year projections, especially when we enter into every negotiation seasons. We make sure that our proposals are prudent, they're data-driven. The general salary increases are across the board, and I think you'll find that they're in line with CPI increases over the years. The market-based adjustments are really targeted to help our county recruit and retain, you know, the success of the county, I think we all recognize, is predicated on hiring the most talented employees, so the market-based adjustments are targeted at those members, employees, that we feel are below-market, and we work closely with the unions to make sure that they agree and understand why our proposals go forward. And healthcare, of course, as we all know, is on its own trajectory with healthcare increases. We look very closely at the greater environment, as well as what other public agencies are doing, and I'll talk about that in the next slide, if I may. I think I covered the market-based adjustments and so forth. I'll skip one. The healthcare contributions are, we look at other agencies that are comparison agencies. Fortunately, we've had the VCHCP Plan, the County Health Plan, which 90% of our employees and members of. Over the prior 10 years or so that we've looked at it, the health plan has saved millions of dollars for our employees as well as the county. That has meant that we've maintained lower flexible credit contributions compared to our comparable agencies. At this time, we think it worthwhile to increase the flexible contribution credits. They're still well in line with other agencies. I will go back. So the MOA itself averages about 3.4% of payroll. The first year, each year, the impact is different, and by way of example, we've shown how that 3.5% is calculated. It's essentially a compilation of the GSI, the flex credit, and the market-based adjustments. In the first year, it's .33%, and other increases such as the bilingual pay. So that's how we derive the 3.55% general increase. Actually, I think it's, first year is 3.5%, but in total, over the three-year period, it's 3.4%, which is in line with the CERA actuarial assumptions. So... Oh, I apologize.
Yeah.
Wily have gone forward.
Right. We hear you. It's just the audience who wants to hear. We want them to make sure they hear.
Yeah, we lose it every so often, you know, so.
My apologies. Anyway, so in closing, I would like to, I won't go through the whole list again, but I thank you for your leadership in guiding us through the process and providing direction. I also really want to mention Mike Powers, not only because he's my boss, but he has been through this a couple of times, and he is the real engine behind what we do and how we do it, so I want to thank him, as well as, of course, Mr. Carroll and Ms. Rodriguez for their fantastic insight. And of course, we have a great team that deals with the unions. We continue to have a great deal of respect for our partners across the table that can, at times, of course, be contentious, but we pride ourselves in continuing with professional and courteous bargaining negotiations. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions for Sean? Okay, so I don't have any cards for the board, any public speaking, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Any additional questions, or what is the pleasure of the board? Okay, we got a first and a second. Ready, vote. Supervisor Parks says yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we, thank you. We're going now to Item 38, and after 38, we're going to take a five-minute break. So, great, great job. Okay, so it's a public hearing regarding water rates, and this is now recommended that we continue this item till February 7th, 2017, the Item 38.
Yes.
So, we don't have any speakers on that, but I understand we're going to have some speakers on 39 and 40. So this one is just to continue. So what's the pleasure of the board?
I move that we continue, if I can.
Yeah. We're falling behind. So let's vote, and that's approved. So Item 30, and 40, and 41, we're just going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll be right back. Okay, we're going to reconvene the meeting, and our next item is Item 39, and this is a request to continue this item to February 28th, 2017. And I have, my understanding, you have a couple of speakers on this item, and I'd like to call the two speakers, or three minutes apiece. And the first one is Jeremy, is Jeremy here? I'm not going to pronounce your last name, Jeremy.
Jeremy Laurentowski, representing the City of Moore Park. I don't really have much to say. I can hold my comments until February 28th, provided this is moved.
Okay, thank you so much. And next item is Walter. Oh, John, okay, let me see, okay. John Alaskas?
My name is John Puklis. This is my good friend and neighbor, Louis Lozano. He has the same issues regarding water allocation as I do. I'm going to read a letter that I wrote to the Water Department dated November 3rd, 2016, and it was received by Sandy Harrison. Public Water Agency, County of Ventura. To whom it may concern, my wife, Jane, and I are California avocado growers. We have a small grove of three acres with 378 trees. 80% of our water usage goes to these trees. We are farmers supplying food to local families, markets, and restaurants. We are also employing local labors to work in the grove. Please reconsider our water allocation. We are retired and on a fixed income. My wife and I are the only ones living on the property. We are conserving water wherever we can, letting some of the landscape die. Please note that our June 22nd bill, Tier 1 allocation, was 0 to 70.56. Our last four bills, our Tier 1 allocation was 0 to 9.40. Our Tier 4 allocation of 4323 would have fallen into Tier 1 in June. We realize that there's a drought and could understand a reasonable increase, but not so drastic an increase that we can't afford. We thank you for your consideration to this situation. Thank you, John and Jane Puklis, and my address is in, I'm off of Grimes Canyon, off the 118 in Moore Park, and many of my neighbors are in the same situation. We're farmers and growers. Please consider our situation.
Thank you, John.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so our item here is the request to continue to February 28th, 2017, at 11:30 a.m. So we need a motion.
Yeah, this is that thing we talked about. These people are, with the allocation issues and all the stuff that it's really affecting these people, and I do want to appreciate Michaela and Jeff for coming and meeting and looking to find any way to make some, I mean, some of these, you heard those allocation numbers, these are, you know, 100, 200, 300% increases to a lot of these people. It's unbelievable, so.
And thank you for the speakers, they'll be taken into consideration. Thank you. Okay, so we voted on that. Let me see. The next item is Item 40, and Item 40, again, is a request to continue to February 2nd at 11:30 a.m. What's the pleasure of the board?
There you go.
The first and a second. Please vote. Okay, that's approved, and Item 41 is, again, a request to continue this item till February 28th, 2017, to 11:30, but we have a speaker, and it's Roland Bauer, Roland?
Bauer.
Bauer, Roland, okay.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Roland Bauer. I have a property in Somus and have an agriculture meter as well as a residential meter. I've reviewed the water service study that was done on October 20th, as well as the water rate restructuring plan on November 11th, and I have real problems with the figures that they came up with, mainly concerning the peaking cost, where they're saying that we're peaking the system, and it doesn't make any sense to me. But anyway, they say in there that the industrial users are low peaking costs, because they use the same amount all the time, all through the year. Then in their figures, they come up with a very high rate of a peaking cost for those people, higher than the thing. Anyway, basically, our district, 19, is mostly agriculture. 70% to 80% of the water goes to agriculture, and if you throw in the outdoor use of water that we use for the residential people, that brings it probably close to 90% of our water is agricultural, is used outside. On our basis for this rate increases, we show capital expenses for a filtration plant to take out the iron and manganese out of our water. I am a member of another water district that did the same process of taking the iron and manganese out of the water. It did us no good whatsoever, and the cost was prohibitive. Everybody had to chip in to build this $2 million plant, and that is basically to make the water better in color-wise. These are not primary standards, these are secondary standards of the water filtration. So to spend that capital expense on 10% of our water makes no sense whatsoever. We had added personnel to run this plant, as well as we were losing, we were having to dump 10% of our water out for backwashing. That plant now, in this district that I'm also a member of, has mothballed this plant, and for the last four years hasn't used it. Not one drop of water's gone through that plant. So why District 19 is insisting on having all these capital improvements, which is boosting the cost of our water up? I really don't know. The rates that they're proposing is going to force many agriculture operations to cease operations. They just won't be able to do it. It's just not feasible.
Roland, Roland, can you summarize it?
Yeah. Well, I believe that we need a two-tier rate. The first tier based on the cheap water, which we can draw out of the ground, which is, we consider it cheap water, it's not, but it's cheaper water, and the second tier based on what water we have to buy in from outside places. And I think we need to come up with something that'll ensure the farmers are able to plan their operations.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to say thank you for your suggestions. It does give us a little time to look some more at what we have coming before us. I hope you can attend our next meeting on this.
Yes.
Definitely, thank you.
And the request is to continue this to February 28th, 2017, at 11:30 a.m. So we have a motion and a second. Please vote. Thank you, thank you for coming on. And that's approved.
Just on that, too, I do want to thank Michaela, Jeff again, and I know they're looking for other solutions, and they had some ideas in our meeting that could come up, and trying to figure out how we can make this all work for everybody.
Yeah, thank you, Supervisor.
You know, and stay within the new law that's come down, so.
Okay, our next item is Item 42, and this is Human Services Agency, and to approve and authorize for the Human Service Director to delete eight full-time equivalent regular unfunded vacant employees, and we'll take it from there, Barry.
All right, welcome, thank you. Chairs Zaragoza, members of the board, Mr. Powers, I'm Barry Zimmerman with the Human Services Agency, and what's before you today is two items, two personnel kind of related items. items. One is to eliminate some positions that we have studied and found that no longer needed in our operations, and so we're asking to eliminate those off our books, and that's represented there by those eight positions. Second item is a request for funding for additional positions for children's. And let me explain the history, a little bit of this here, is that a while back, your board has heard many presentations on children and where we're going with the workload standards at one time, and now with CCR and the added workloads associated with that. Through the budget process, as well as your board's actions, we've added allocations to our budget over time to allow us to hire up positions to get to those workload standards. Not all the funding at those approval points were given, not in the budget, nor at those times, with the understanding that we didn't need those budget funds until the time we needed to hire those positions or came up with a staffing level that we were able to then offer and hire those positions. We are at that point. We've been working steadily to prepare for CCR and other things, and so we now are at a position to fill all our social work positions, and we're requesting the funding associated with that. Funding is a portion general fund, a portion of other funding, such as realignment, as well as federal dollars, will go into sustaining those positions. And then they'll be added to our base and continue on as originally approved by your board to add those positions to that operations. So that's it in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'll interview you.
Thank you, Barry. Any questions, so Barry?
Yeah. Part of this, Barry, I guess, comes down to the idea, I think we're doing the right thing, children's the right thing. It's just, in a large agency, we hope there's a way to find money, and I know Mr. Powers and I had a long conversation about this yesterday, and you guys have scrubbed this pretty tough to try to figure out where it is, because it's four-hundred thousand dollars out of general fund money for this.
Absolutely.
And it's eight-hundred thousand dollars next year, right?
Yeah, yes, yes, that is correct, because this is only a half-year allocation there. We don't look on that lightly, and we do, we do get scrutinized heavily with Mike's office, and I appreciate that. But to tell you what's transpired, because we added quite a number of positions in children's over time, we did not receive all the funding at that time. So we've, for example, in this particular activity, we've freed up funds, if you will, and the way we freed up funds is that our budgets through all our operations are integrated. And so as we work in one area, they then free up funds in another area that we originally had planned, and so we're moving those funds to these priority areas. So we're moving significant amounts of money out of adults into this area and keeping adults very static in that regard to deal with this workload. In addition, some of the funding for the positions that you don't see here is that the state has given us some allocations related to CCR, our allocation funding, and we're able then to fill previous approved positions. Otherwise, those positions would have been requested general fund as well. So we are making every effort to try to find funding and to leverage our funding in order to fill the positions that have been committed to us first, and then secondarily, we discussed with Mike that there's no other alternative, we need to move forward here, and that's that.
And I understand where you're going to go. I guess, are you thinking that, I know you got this year four and maybe next eight hundred, do you think there's other funds that'll help come? Because I know you're really not, there's a lot of other monies, you're trying not to use general fund money to do this. Do you see there are other things to help after next year's eight hundred thousand that will find some other monies, or what's your?
Well, we'll continue to work on that. Some of it is a product of realignment. So we were realigned in two thousand and eleven as well, and some of that funding, the sales tax and BLF funding. So as that increases, then when we go into, mainly that's seen in the budget process, that we project out where our realignment, and some years it grows higher, and then our actual net county costs will decrease in the budget funding, so that fluctuates up and down. And yes, so there are opportunities. Are they just there to be taken off the shelf? No, it's a continual evaluation as it goes through time.
And just to add to that point, is, down the road, in the next couple of years, there will be some savings, as I understand it, in terms of the reduced number of group home placements. That'll reduce the amount of direct aid, general fund dollars that we put towards direct aid. That'll take some while to come to fruition, but in answer to your question, Supervisor, there is some ultimate savings down the road. This is a state mandate, and we need to do it.
And there's savings on a cost level, money-wise, and for persons. So to be able to add this so that we could have that continuum of care for our fostered youth and to make sure those caseloads, we can get to them, as is changed from group homes to independent homes, foster homes, that's really important to me. But what I do ask is to make sure that we're tracking what this cost savings is. Are we effective with adding more dollars to it, more services to it? Are we effective in that way for our constituents? That, to me, is really important. I know, I don't want to raise our budget in any way, however, if we're raising our level of service and we can actually track that, I would like to see that. I don't know how the process is or how your reporting is.
You can come back with a, you come back with a report on that.
Yeah, absolutely. And so as we shift from group homes into family-based care and therapeutic foster homes, or even less costly than group homes, we can show that. The anticipation for the program itself is to take those savings and say, what do we need to effectively put that at the front end so children are taken care of prior to entering an expensive system? So that's some of the goal there. Also, we know that this is a new legislative mandate from the state, and so we're not shy to tracking the cost of additional costs that it's costing the counties. Very much I have a role at the state and our association in tracking that and communicating that to the state, that this is mandated cost. And so we are advocating at that level to say that the state also needs to pay their fair share associated with the burden that's coming down locally.
And the state needs the data, anyway.
Yes, and so that is one of our primary budget platforms for this year.
And Barry, follow up a little bit.
And that helps our legislation, if we're putting that on our state and federal, if we're making sure we track this so that they understand our needs of our county.
Exactly right.
And is it part of the platform that was passed?
That's right. And how about, Barry, how about the training of the foster care parents, you know, understand that they need some kind of training?
Yes, they need, you know, resource family approval process is part of that, new added requirements, and so that has been up and running for a while now. We continually evaluate that in order to make that more efficient and better in reaching a broader population. We appreciate the work of the board, in particular Supervisor Bennett has reached out into the community in which we get a lot of referrals from, that helps us there.
And you'll report all that back to us in the future?
Yes, absolutely.
Any additional questions, so Barry?
I just have one thing. After trying to find that money and suck it out of the general fund, that's usually pretty tough. All the bruises Catherine put on you aren't adding up, or what?
Catherine. I just want to point out, you know, we've talked some and appreciate board support of the concept of sometimes we're going to spend more money if we're going to get more
service. There really are two issues that we have to get our arms around, the fact that we're just going to have, it's going to cost people more. One is water. And water in Ventura County is going to cost more, and providing the new service level that's demanded by the state is going to cost more. Now, we want to do it as efficiently as possible and try to transfer costs, et cetera, but we just have to recognize those are two cost increases that are out there. One that we're going to bear and one that our citizens are going to have to bear as we try to adjust to the new realities going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, so we have a?
I would just say on the realignment piece in terms of tracking, too, that's something, I think it's positive to be realigned local, local control is better, but then the state has to fund it adequately, and sometimes they realign it, fund it, and say, good luck to you.
Mm-hmm.
And then we've got to say, hmm, that's just fine, but we do need some more funds to carry out this mandate, and so we've done that with safety realignment as well, so we'll be sure to do it here, too. Just one last context point, too, is that in terms of group home use, as I understand, our county is very low, and lower than the state average, so they're doing a very good job of already heading in this direction, so.
We're way ahead of the process. So, okay, so we need a motion. Okay, we've got a first and a second. Let's vote.
I know.
And that's approved. Thank you, Barry. Our next item is a GSA, General Services Agency, approval and authorization for the purchase agent to increase twenty-six purchase orders and contracts totaling three-point-one-eight million dollars covered by various projects and services throughout the rendering of the fiscal year two thousand and six seventeen. So we'll take it from there.
Good afternoon, Chairs Aragosa Supervisors. Mr. Powers, welcome Supervisor Long. Happy two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you.
My name is Boyd Donovan, and I'm your Assistant Purchasing Agent in the General Services Agency Procurement Services. I'm here today to represent that item of twenty-six contract increases and to sign an agreement with Honeywell International. Pursuant to Government Code, Section two-five-five-zero-two dot five, a purchasing agent must have board approval for all service agreements that are expected to exceed a hundred thousand dollars in the fiscal year. Approval today does not generate actual expenditures. That occurs as orders are issued against the service agreements. The Honeywell contract does not exceed board approval limits for monetary limits, but it does have language in there that does require your approval. With that, I'm here to respond to any questions you might have.
Any questions, board members? It's a pleasure of the board.
That language you had, you were just concerned with it because it's not our typical language.
It's not our typical language. It has to do with the governing law, where that would happen, usually we want California. It allows for interest charges, but we don't make late payments.
But you're not going to get this little company called Honeywell to go along with what we want, huh?
Usually we can, but for twenty-five thousand dollars, it's not going to happen.
I don't know.
Not this time.
Okay, so.
Can I ask a quick thing, and maybe this is at a different time, but I'm just trying to understand the process and why we need these kind of increases. Are they necessary? I mean, maybe we can meet at a different time to talk about that, just because these numbers are so large. It gives me a better understanding as to what the process is.
I would be happy to meet with you and bring along the departments that represent those contracts. They're varied, and some are county-wide, some are very specific by department, but we can certainly come to you and discuss that.
Thank you.
Good point, okay. Another second.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, let's vote. That's approved.
Approved.
Thank you. Our next item, forty-four, is a public hearing regarding adoption of resolution of intention to sell county-owned real property at one-point-eight-four acres of land owned by, located along Victoria, south of Gonzalez Road, to the city of Oxnard. Mr. Phil Gard.
Good morning, Chair Aragosa, members of the board, Mr. Powers. The item before you is sale of excess county real property. We want you to set the minimum bid at two-hundred-and-one-three-thousand dollars. We would like you to delegate the authority to hold the sale to the Director of Airports and to set the date for the auction, February eighth, at three p.m., in the Department of Airports Conference Room. This property, although it is in Oxnard and fronts on Victoria Boulevard, was the outer marker for the Camrio Airport. It was rendered irrelevant when the Federal Aviation Administration decommissioned the runway that it served. The property has been farmed by the landowner that owns land on three sides of this since the late nineteen-nineties. The Department of Airports has gone to the Federal Aviation Administration and gotten approval for the sale. They've done the environmental report. We've included the cost of preparing the environmental report and the rest of the staff time in the proposed sale price. In terms of use for any other purpose, although technically it's a legal lot because it's a sale of a county-owned property, and it doesn't meet the minimum lot size requirements for that zone, I don't believe the ultimate use will be for residential purposes. I think it'll ultimately be farming. There are severe issues with developing this property for residential. First one being that the sewer line for the city of Oxnard does not run past this property, and extending it down to there would be very expensive. Secondly, permission would be required from the city of Oxnard to put a driveway out there, and you'd have people coming from a full stop onto a roadway where the speed limit is fifty and fifty-five miles an hour.
That property's west of Oxnard High School, right?
Yes.
And it's bonded by Gonzalez and?
It's south of Gonzalez, north of Teal Club, fronts right on Victoria.
Did we ever approach the high school if they wanted to buy their property?
Notices were sent to all governmental agencies required, including the Oxnard Unified School District.
Okay, and, okay, so I don't have any speakers on this, and?
I'm sorry, it is adjacent to the high school?
Yes, yes, in fact, it's west of the high school, isn't it?
It's not adjacent to the high school, no. It sits, it's one acre, there's a property that's slightly less than an acre, if you look at the exhibit, and I think we submitted a PowerPoint, I don't know if it's?
Is it to the west or to the east?
It's to the west of Oxnard High School.
But it's not adjacent to?
No.
Okay.
It has been surrounded on three sides by farm property, and that has been farmed for the last twenty years.
And it is zoned for agriculture?
It's zoned A.E.
Right.
Okay, so we got a first?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a request that before we send property out to everybody, you said notice was sent to all of those various, you know, the school district and the cities, et cetera, before we send that out, I would like to have the board of supervisors become aware of that, the fact that we're considering doing that. You know, more time, I think you make a case that there's about why this would be difficult property to use, but just more time to be able to vet that. So I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the board somehow not at least being informed that, hey, we're beginning the process of, so that during that, during that period, people can evaluate it, so.
We'll work with the CEO's office to establish a process in the future.
Thank you.
Right, and just to note that in the letter, it states that this is, this property is not conform to, it's a very small lot, and then it's not beneficial for any other use except for farming, and that the Diamond L Ranch has been leasing it for this whole time. I ended up at the Aviation Commission last night and got to hear about it, and so it's a one-point-eight-three, and I think?
I guess I would like to, I would just like to make sure I vet the analysis that says it's not usable for anything else, because it just depends on how creative you are, and I'm not saying that that's the case, but I just, and I don't disagree with this action, but I just want to have the opportunity to be creative if we need to.
I know Supervisor Long was finished, but I'm?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, and so I'm kind of familiar, looking at that area recently, and it seems that one of the more likely uses of farmland out there because of SOAR, because this is protected by SOAR, right?
Yes.
Would be for education, for schools. Schools don't have to abide by the county general plan, or?
Do, I don't?
Correct, but again, notices, we follow the government code. Government code requires that we send notices to the school district, local area housing authorities, state parks.
But the question, the question that I have on this is oftentimes, well, a few times, we have seen, particularly in Oxnard, the school districts building schools next to airport runways, for example, and I'm just wondering, is this close to an airport runway? I know we definitely ended the use of one as a runway.
No, this is approximately somewhere between a quarter and a half mile north of the Oxnard Airport.
It's out of the zone.
And I think what Supervisor Bennett was saying is just, if the board supervisor could get notice that we're going out for this in advance, it gives us an opportunity to flag it if we want to, that'd be helpful.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you.
Do we sell much property on a regular basis like this? The last time we sold excess property was ten years ago. It took us a while to get through the code.
I didn't think there was much of this.
And it is in the unincorporated county?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Okay, so I don't have any cards for this, and so I'm going to close the public hearing. So we got a vote? One more vote? Everybody voted? Okay.
Thank you.
It's approved. Our next item is Policy Matters forty-five, and this is Supervisor Long.
Yes, that is me, just trying to find it. Went back and forth on the screens, apologize.
Forty-five.
Trying to be environmentally friendly and not have all these paperwork in front of me.
You can just say move approval.
Right, so I, thank you.
Please vote. Okay.
I did.
We need one more vote?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, that's approved, and item forty-six is recommendation by Supervisor Boyd to appoint Christina?
Yes, please do that. She's willing to serve on our cemetery board. Anybody, that's wonderful.
Please vote. Okay, that's approved, and the forty-seven is my item, is to reappoint Marlene Torres to the Behavioral Health Board for a three-year term. Motion to approve. And that's approved. Our next item is a closed session. Our next item is a closed session. Leroy, we're going to have any announcements after the?
No announcements today.
No announcements, and then?
Well, there'll be closed sessions. No announcements, and so we'll adjourn out of closed session.
Use if you can announce.
And also for the Board, we also have APCB at 1:30, Board members? We have the APCB at 1:30 today.
Closed session will take 15 minutes.
So just for information. Okay.